I don't think they have a sufficient amount of parking on this project yet. So, I'm not saying we're going to stuff it in here. But we've got to hear some reason why, in this particular case, unlike Kiara or Beavis or anything else we've done in this community, that we would reduce the amount of parking on this project. I haven't heard a reason why we would do that. If they want to put three real estate offices in that new building and to suggest to us that there won't be any cars coming in there that day, that would be fine. But there needs to be better reasoning behind a reduction in parking here. And it's all compromise. We need to see that those 60-degree parking spaces can actually be accommodated in those things. We need to tandem spaces. There's no question about it. It compromises the reality of those spaces. I don't care how somebody says they're going to manage it. It won't work like that all the time. Move them over to municipal lot, move it across the street. Something's got to be given for this member of the board, anyway, to approve it. So, it's not a matter of just, you know, coming up with... We can't have the issue existing as it exists tonight, at least from my point of view.
Chad, don't you think that a single bedroom apartment is less?
I'm willing to go to IT standards, ITE standards. Just a little short.
Okay. Yeah, but it's less than a home, good. Single bedroom home.
Yep.
Of course, we need the historic tavern. We move over and locate somewhere else. That needs to be resolved in the other situations. And also, we were being asked for the raised crosswalk there near the school street. I think that's something that needs to be done. So, otherwise, I think we're pretty close here in this resolve. Little bit closer.
Hey, when you sort of raise the building at the end of school, you mean cross school?
Yeah, cross school. All across Washington.
That's over to Cafe Beba?
Yeah.
That's on their traffic.
No, it's on the street, obviously, but that's...
You want the town? You mean, you go over like a speed, I want a crosswalk?
Yeah, raised crosswalk. I think that's right, yeah. I mean, it's either, it's either easy if they're contracted to do that or they pay the money for the town to do that kind of thing.
Steve, that has not been reviewed by the town and confirmed that that's needed or appropriate in that area. So, that's not part of this project. That's something that we're looking at for Islington Center. As Islington Center is redeveloped, that is not something that's on the table for an applicant.
So, some of it's been recommended by the pedestrian bicycle committee.
It has.
I think it's a good idea and I think it's a perfect place for that kind of thing. So, it should... If it hasn't gone through the process with the town yet, then...
It's the issue of it not having been through the process with the town, but more than that, it's the issue of that not being appropriate requirement for commercial development who's doing off-site work, to do off-site work that's not warranted by a traffic count. So, we don't require any of the high-street businesses to raise the crosswalks across High Street. We don't require businesses on Route 1 to do off-site improvements. That's not something that our zone has the ability to take into consideration. It is something the town's looking at, but it's not...
Well, we never, I don't think we ever required it other than, yeah, in, on, and every other type of larger development.
As you can read, it near the DPW and the police wanted because I'm seeing those things, but I don't know that I've ever turned a corner and hit one immediately. Okay? If you're rolling out, you're going to do this with your car going over this thing.
Well, then, they're not that abrupt. They have to drive along this, so that doesn't happen. But it does slow down the traffic and make it safer, but that's...
I agree with Nora, it's not appropriate to this market.
I would too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, are we looking to continue this?
So, I think we might continue it until the 12th and give direction to the applicant and the purity consultants to schedule time as soon as possible between now and then to... We'll work at app, contact app, and we'll set something up. And what are we, we need it? We'll have to determine the location. Why don't you continue it to this location? I can't guarantee the room's available yet. But we'll do our best to locate it.
Make a motion to continue this hearing today from the 12th. 7:30 in the library.
Second motion?
Oh, is the bed looking off? Aye, aye.
And if this location isn't available, the meeting will be posted for a new location and there'll be a notice posted on the store in case anyone comes here by mistake.
All right. That concludes our business for Washington's project.
Thank you.
We move on to item two. We have earth material movement, such as camera public hearing for Mill Street, Lot 19. And we are here to reiterate 44 Mill Street, which is number nine. Our agenda immediately following this will be a number three.
At the bottom here, April 12th? Yes. April 12th, yes. To public hearing, continuation of this public hearing, let me call the town.
The crossing your money?
It's crossing. Sorry.
Cross your line. Sure. You go late.
Hello, good evening, Jim. Dan American, American engineer, here on behalf of the applicants. We had our initial hearing on this at your last meeting. When we came away from that, you were waiting for somebody to put from the town engineer and also asked me to take a look at possible reconsideration of the deep-sunk structure that we have at the end of the driveway. Just to refresh your memory here, we have a trench drain across the driveway and a French drain along the side of it. And before it enters the underground infiltration system, we have a deep-sunk structure. And we made, after consulting with the town engineer, we made that larger. We made it a corporate structure, 24 inches in diameter, and we added a hood to the outlet pipe. So, it acts like a smaller version of what you might find in a typical street. And that was the only change. The town engineer did also ask me to increase the cross slope of the driveway towards the French drain, which I did. And those were the two changes that we made.
It's sloped a little bit more towards the...
Right to left, yes. Towards the French drain.
Okay. Nora, any other information to add?
Uh, no, we have a report from the town engineer and Jeff is here as well. So, if you have any questions after I read this report, if you'd like me to answer them or any additional questions that come on this.
Are you satisfied with...
Yeah, after discussion with him, he addressed my comments. The main concern was getting water from the impervious area of the driveway making it onto Mill Street. So, sloping up the driveway along with the larger structure should take the flow into the, uh, into the infiltration system.
I think Jeff's report also talked about the stability of the slope and all that kind of thing, too, which would broaden up his comments in the last hearing.
Yeah, well, a good portion of the steep slope now is the hammered rock. So, that slope is stable just by the fact that it's rock. So, it shouldn't have... There'll be erosion control measures until vegetation is established on the site as well.
Correct.
All the grading is done to meet the grade stat around the perimeter of the lot to know if that will be flooding property.
Yes.
It's going to look like, I saw back today, it looked like on the left there is, seems to be some lean disturbance onto the neighboring property.
No. No, all the work that's been done so far is on site.
And so, looking at it today, so more of that hill has to be removed?
Well, they're in the process of, you know, when work stopped, they were in the process of working into this slope. They, I think, as I mentioned in the last meeting, they're not sure that they will undertake this whole removal. It's going to depend on how extensive the ledge is. They may just reach a point where they, they're just going to stop and then feel like that's enough. What's on this plan is the most amount that would be removed.
Okay.
So, just a reminder to the board, when you consider earth material movement special permits, you have criteria that you need to look at. You need to make findings that the earth material movement that's proposed will not negatively affect the surrounding area according to very specific findings. So, I've drafted a motion for your consideration.
Yeah, it's your... You have it.
Unless there are any specific conditions that you feel are warranted in this case that aren't the standard conditions that are on all other earth material movements. If you have any specific conditions that could be added, I'd like to motion to include all the standard conditions.
Do we have copies of that?
I have one copy.
So, what, do you run down the conditions real quick?
Sure.
These are what go on in everyone.
They go on everything, right. They're, I mean, they're tailored to meet this one, but they're the standard conditions. First is accept as modified by the conditions and findings hereof. The project should comply with the project plans in all respects. The existing pavement on Mill Street shall be protected from damage from loading and unloading of material and/or equipment related to the proposed construction. The town DPW should be notified to inspect the installation of the infiltration chamber. The project engineer shall certify that the infiltration system was installed per the proposed design shown on the submitted and approved project plan. If the final design varies significantly from the proposed design and as build plan certified by the design engineer shall be submitted to the town planner and town engineer prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Project-related construction and earth material movement shall comply with the town's general bylaws. Chapter 292 for noise in construction, limited to between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays. All trucks carrying earth material to the project site shall be required to access Mill Street from the north from Hartford Street only. All trucks leaving the property shall be prohibited from traveling south on Mill Street. If the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency, the town of Westwood or other regulatory agency of the Commonwealth or the federal government, the applicant shall make the appropriate application for the same. Any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for amendment of this decision and the planning board should consider such application in accordance with requirements of MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. The applicant shall promptly repair any damage without any causes to sidewalks, street pavements, signs, or fixtures or features within any public right of way after obtaining permission from the town. Such repairs shall be performed to the town of Westwood standards and a copy of the decision and project plan should be kept on the project site at all terms during construction. Those are the standard conditions. If you feel any others are warranted, those can be added at this time.
No other comments on the board? Chad, this time we'll ask if there's any comments from the public on this matter? And if so, you can come up and state your name and address.
Great Buckley, 41 Mills, Millbrook Road, except two clarifications. So, does the town engineer or do the developers have expertise in understanding the impact that drilling or blasting ledge will cause to adjacent dwellings that use that same ledge as their foundation opposed to a regular poured concrete foundation?
No, I'm not an expert geologist. So, if word feels that's necessarily, it's a good advice, I'd admit.
Okay. And so, I think that should be considered because a dwelling next door was built on ledge, not on a foundation. And if they're, you know, if it's all connected, I'm not a geologist either, but I would think that should be considered.
So, when there's a blasting permit that's issued by the fire department, there's a requirement for pre-blast surveys to be taken of adjacent properties and any properties that are likely to be disturbed.
Maybe not that...
That's what we require and that's what is consistently required. It's required by the fire department to obtain...
Once they pull the blasting permit?
A blasting permit.
Okay, well, we know no permits were pulled for any work that's been done, right?
I do not know if they have a blasting permit or not. I do not know.
No blasting's been done.
But if they were to do blasting, before blasting, they must get a blasting permit. Before they can get a blasting permit, they must submit affidavits that they've had pre-blast surveys of all properties within the surrounding area. Actually, I believe I heard that neighbors were contacted for pre-blast surveys. Given a 24-hour notice, yeah. So, they are intending to do pre-blast surveys.
Okay. And my other question is, since there was no permit issued, just in driving by, probably there was a lot of, we're talking about a lot of earth being removed. Was the conservation commission applied with exactly how much was going to be removed? Because as I've said about this area, repeatedly, it's part of the constant water trend. It's very sensitive.
Right. So, my understanding is that by the time it got to the conservation commission, there was a greater understanding of the amount of earth material movement. When it was initially begun, the amount of earth material movement was estimated a lower amount, such that an earth material movement special permit was not believed to have been necessary. Once it became clear that there was over 200 cubic yards that were going to be required to be removed, that's when we required the earth material movement. So, the conservation commission has seen the same plans that the plan already seen.
With the new larger amount of removal?
They have.
And they'll prove it.
I believe they granted an order of conditions, which has been appealed and DEP has yet to issue its decision.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Mahoney, 198, Mill Street. After hearing what the guidelines that need to be followed, my question is, if a final order of conditions has not been issued by the DEP, will the applicant be allowed to remove the excess, you know, the remaining roughly 2,000 cubic yards of earth? He's already removed earth from the front buffer zone, but in the rear of the buffer zone, there's two buffers on this property. Oops, sorry. And this back buffer zone right here, it appears that work is also going to be happening here?
No. No work in the back buffer zone.
So, this is where the kind of wall of earth is right now? Am I correct or...
No.
Where's the wall of earth?
Forward of that.
Can you show me?
It's in this territory up in here.
So, will this end up being a graded hill back down? Because this, like, how is this going to work? Because right now, this is about 40 or 50 feet high.
Well, there, there's, along the limited work line in this area here, though the existing grade will come up and then come back down to our backyard because the grade at the, at the limited work line is higher than the grade at the backyard. So, there'll be a slope down towards the wetland here where the woods are, and then a slope in towards the yard, just in this little, little area here. Down into here, we meet the existing grade along the limited work line. With respect to the order of conditions, the Conservation Commission, the Wellness Protection Act, they have jurisdiction over buffer zone areas. So, that's this area up the front where the work is proposed. Under those regulations, the applicant has the right to do work on other portions of the property, assuming all the necessary permits have been obtained.
So, one of the conditions that I read in the draft motion clearly stated that any other approvals need to be obtained. So, that would include an approval from DEP as a superseding order if one is issued for the work within our jurisdiction. It would include the order of conditions from the conservation commission, which is in hand. It would include any other permits that need to be required. And if any of them require changes in the plan that affect this earth material movement special permit, they will need to come back to you for modification. But everything that is needed is an order now if you make the findings that are necessary to be made under the terms of Section 7.1.
Do we know about when DEP will decide?
We do not.
Don't, he can't do anything until...
Uh, he's, he's allowed to work outside of the area.
Outside of the park, right.
Okay. So, we need to see if the board's ready for this motion.
If you're willing, so if someone wants to make the motion, which includes all the findings.
Agree with the findings?
Read the findings. What I read to you were the conditions of approval, but there are findings that you would need to make prior to that to allow those conditions of approval to be part of a decision.
No, sorry.
They're in the motion.
So, have you one?
Looking for to make a motion?
Well, I'm ready, he's ready. You guys go, Ken, I'll go. Okay, I move that precedent to Section 71, let the result out in the bylaw with respect to the Mill Street, formerly known as Lot 1. Application for earth material movement E&amp;M special permit. The planning board, number one, finds that the earth material operation proposed to be conducted under the required special permit, requested special permit, as modified by the conditions imposed hereby, will not be contrary to the best interest of the town and will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of Section 1, 7.1. Number two, finds that said operation will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or safety. Three, finds that said operations will not produce noise, dust, or other effects observable as the lot lines and amounts seriously detrimental or detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. Number four, finds that said operations will not result in transportation of materials on ways giving access to the subject land which will cause traffic congestion or hazard. And five, finds that said operations will not result in transportation which will cause undue injury to roadway surfaces. Six, finds that said operations will not result in change in topography and cover which will be disadvantage, disadvantageous to the most appropriate use of the land on which the operation is conducted. Find that said operations do not have a material, that's number seven, find that said operations will not have a material, a material adverse effect in the natural or engineered drainage patterns or groundwater or surface water, or groundwater surface, yeah? Number eight, finds that said operation will not have a material adverse effect on the health or safety of persons living in the neighborhood or in the use of amenities of adjacent land. And nine, looks to grant the requested E&amp;M special permit with the following conditions, which we've read, which we will include in the motion. A second of motion? A second. Any more comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
A aye?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you very much.
There's close. Next is, number nine on your agenda is 44 Mill Street. Further consideration of application, DEP complete meeting on February 9, 2016. For the record, Edward Musto, 36, Blue Hill Drive. I am the applicant on this application. Works before the board was a plan which was a proposed division of the lot into two lots on an approved subdivision way. This subdivision way was approved by the planning board back on April 30, 1969. Two F waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations were given to the plan. A covenant was recorded for the build-out of roadway utilities and infrastructure to serve as the proposed lot. And then in 1971, the lot was released from the planning board and the board's, and its findings concluded that the roadway and infrastructure which were built were built to the satisfaction of the planning board. My position is that this is an approved subdivision way. Therefore, the plan that I submitted for the last hearing, in my opinion, was entitled to an A&amp;R endorsement. Some issues came up with whether or not the roadway was built. I think the covenant that was, to release the lot clearly states that the roadway and infrastructure were built to the satisfaction of the planning board. So, it's my position that this is an approved subdivision way. The two lots that I'm proposing to create are on a subdivision way. So, I think that's my position.
Staff has reviewed this, town council has reviewed it. We've reviewed the additional documentation that Ed submitted. We saw no evidence in that documentation that a subway, a subdivision road was ever constructed. We did see a release of the lots, but there was nothing in that release of the lots that said a subdivision road was constructed. Ed has said that he believes the driveway to Lot 44 exists as a subdivision road. We found no evidence of that. We found no evidence that that driveway was ever intended or actually used to serve both 42 and 44 as a subdivision road would. With that in mind, there's no vital access to the property as proposed. An A&amp;R requires vital access to the lots that are being created. And so, we recommend that the board consider this not approvable as an A&amp;R because it is a subdivision. And would require action by the board under the subdivision control.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the applicant? Okay. Yes, sir? How can we say the roadway was never built? The roadway is shown on the plan.
The roadway is shown on a plan, it's not shown on the ground.
It is, it is on the ground. It's defined as a roadway on the ground. How can the planning board then, 1971, release the lot from the covenants and state that, that the construction which is, which has been established is satisfactory to the planning board and then release the lot? I mean, how can you release the lot if there's no roadway there?
There's no knowing how they release the lot, why they release the lot, but there's no statement that the roadway is constructed. There is no statement, we have seen, that's been submitted to us, that says that construction standards were waived in 1969 and that when the, when the covenant was released in 1972, it was released because the planning board was satisfied that the roadway was built. Keep in mind, both 42 and 44 had frontage on Mill Street. So, the covenant could have been released with a decision not to build the road. And it was determined that there was sufficient frontage on the street and that's why the covenant was released. There are no records that have been submitted to us that make clear what happened in this case. So, we have no evidence, nothing that says that construction standards were waived. And even if they had been waived, there is not the road that is on the subdivision plan in the ground today. And in fact, there is not even, as part of this application, any indication that the owner of a part of that paper road is an applicant. So, the, the application is not signed by the owner of 42, who owns portion, a portion, the turnaround of the paper street. So, we found the application to be incomplete, but recommend that you accept it despite its incompleteness and deny it on the ground that it shows a subdivision, not an A&amp;R.
Can we include all those things in the motion? Or do we just have to go by the fact that it's... We have to accept the fact the application is complete?
No, you don't. You can, you can determine the application to be incomplete and still vote on it. Accept it as, accept it despite its incompleteness. Accept it and vote that it would be a subdivision, even if it were signed by the property owner. It would be necessary to be part of the application because it involves a road that falls on two different lots.
All right, so...
There are, there are three pieces of paper that are on record. One is the approved plan, April 30, 1969. Once the plan was approved, covenant under Form K was, was filed by the owner at the registry of deeds. Talked about roadway, infrastructure, utilities, and Section 2F waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations, dealing with the reasonable rules and regulations of the planning board. In 1971, the lot was released from the covenant. The board stated that it was satisfied with the construction that was done. Therefore, they released the lot. Those are the only three pieces of paper we have here. We don't have anything else. We, we can't go back through 60 years of history. All we have is, it's on record at the registry of deeds.
The board members have received copies of those. They've reviewed them, town council's reviewed them, staff has reviewed them. We have not found them to provide the evidence to determine that there is a road there.
So, I'll make a motion that... I thought we did. More public.
I will open this up to public comment if there's anyone here wishes to speak on the matter or ask a question. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
So I'll make a motion that we deny this A and R for all of the reasons that were mentioned by staff. You have to list all of those reasons.
I do, and I think, we do.
I think they should all be included.
So, those reasons are, there is nothing submitted by the applicant to indicate that a prior finding board waived the construction standards for the subdivision road. There is nothing submitted by the applicant to indicate that the driveway of Forty-four Mill Street was ever intended to serve as a subdivision road. And there's nothing submitted by the applicant to indicate that the subdivision road shown in the approved nineteen sixty-nine plan could today be constructed in accordance with that plan. As such, town council and I recommend that the board deny the application and refuse to endorse the proposed A and R plan on the grounds that it chose a subdivision.
Right, for all of those reasons, I'm following the recommendation of staff and town council, but I may re, reject this A and R.
Second. Any more comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, I will send a letter to town board in the morning.
Everything's, all the, but recommended that. Thank you. Okay, next, so wait on. Number three on your agenda is the Girl Scout House, Laura Lane, Limited EIDR, Public hearing. One thousand, approximately a thousand square foot building. For use as girl scout meeting house on newly created parcel on Laura Lane. The town here is the applicant?
Yes. So I can explain the application. Can you hear this up on the screen? Please. So you want to move on to the next, on the agenda of our appointments?
Okay. Twenty Southwest Park, EIDR Public hearing. Application for new professional accounting office continues on February the ninth. Hello. The microphone right there, if you could grab that, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Lee, and this is Marilyn Lee Tom. And we were here last time seeking approval to move my accounting firm to five thousand square feet. And at the time I had a tenant and it was going to move into ten thousand square feet as a behavioral setup. Unfortunately, since then, the ABIL center backed out. We never had to be, they ended up backing out, making our application a lot simpler. And so I'm seeking to get my accounting firm into five thousand square feet. From the comments from the last meeting, Abby, Ms. McCabe, sent me comments, and I think supplied all the information that was needed for that. We changed the site plan for the walkway. The walkway was mentioned going to the parking spaces. We changed it to go into the landing of the handicap space. We provided a picture of the dumpster, where the dumpster was going to go. Oh, we submitted a lighting plan. And the specs of the fixtures was requested. Do we have any of those material or?
It was also made in a drop box. Is it in the box or?
Nora, did you, you know, as we?
Abby did review all the, all the materials that were submitted, but she hasn't revealed.
So you still have a new entrance in the front of the building?
A new entrance in the front of the building.
Sidewalk's going either way.
The sidewalk is going right alongside the building now. Right into the landing of the, of the handicap right.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
So that's a big change?
Yes.
And then the, and then add, and the light?
And the light.
Very much so.
Did we identify a location of dumpster?
It's next to the transformer on the right side of the building.
Okay, so the enclosure around is up the dumpster. Did we get that?
Yeah. The plan I'm looking at doesn't show an enclosure around dumpster here where that condition for dumpsters. It needs to be fenced off with some type of a picket fence, right? Stocking.
Can, can, does it know what you need the stocking fence, right?
It can be anything other than metal, it has to be non-transparent, so it could be a...
Vinyl.
Vinyl, or wood, or, you know, some material.
Dumpster, it's a three by five.
A three by five dumpster was still to be addressed.
Alright, so we can put that as a petition?
We can.
Yeah. So he's like, he's like to go around the building and indicate it, okay, where they're going.
We talked about the height, you're just gonna?
The height of the light?
The height of the light, right, sorry.
Fourteen feet.
And how tall is the building?
Sixteen. One story.
Okay. Any questions for the board, the applicant?
I think it simplifies a detail.
I have one comment. There was a request to have a bike rack in, put in place. I have no problems with putting bike racks in. My only concern is that it's a, it's a cul-de-sac. My building is a cul-de-sac and only access in is Route One. And the back of my building is Route ninety-five. So there is no bike access into my building.
This is very similar to when the board reviewed seventy-five, eighty-five Providence Highway, which is considered a, a road that is not safe to bicycle on. Some people do, while the bicycles on Route One. But it is not safe to do so. So the board in that case decided not to require a bicycle rack, if they're concerned about encouraging bicycle riding in an area that was unsafe.
Well, I don't think we're encouraging that. There are some people who, it doesn't bother. I, I checked on Google Earth today, and there are paths along the edge of the road, off the road, where people obviously have walked, and they're walking, they're probably bicycling also. So there are, you know, a sufficient number of people break that path along the road. So I, you know, I think one bicycle rack, I don't think is, that would be sufficient, you know. As long as it's, you're putting on a new sidewalk there, right? And that's what material is?
Concrete.
Concrete, so it just.
No, there's no big deal to put one in. But my point is, I don't want to encourage bicycles to come to my building when it's dangerous to come to my building. That's my only concern.
Yeah. And I, I think there are ways to get there that are not dangerous or the people, I mean, it's...
There are no roads to get there other than Route One.
There, there's...
There's, there's no path.
Bicycle riding on Route One is permitted. It is not prohibited. And there are bicycles who will do it, so. It may never happen, but I think, I think we should be consistent and just say, put on a bicycle rack. Trails may be developed someday, because I know we were discussing that. Along the railroad tracks or something, you never know, but I think we should be consistent.
Maybe you could have a condition that if trails are developed at some time in the future that a bicycle rack will put in. It seems unusual to require a business to spend money on a bicycle rack that is very unlikely to be used.
Well, I would tell you that it's expensive, one is...
Yeah, I agree with Laura. We have a third person. I don't think it's necessary, but, but that business on at this time. Can you, want to give a word of thanks for that specific item?
Oh, okay, I move that we include a bicycle rack in, a single bicycle rack in front of here.
I have a motion to include a bicycle rack? Wait a second. Okay. In a second. So, motion doesn't care. So that's...
So unless there's any other comments, do you want to move on the application?
Anyone from the public like to weigh in or ask questions? Yeah. Bless you. Bless you. Thank you. Okay? Singing none? So the motion to? I think a motion that we approve the EIDR for twenty Southwest Park as amended. We give the condition that the dumpster gets a proper enclosure of our in bylaws. Emotion? I'll second the motion for approval. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking back to number four, the Girl Scout House. I apologize, we're having technical difficulties and I can't show you the, the plans on the screen. So each of board members have copies of the plans, and if anyone who is here interested in this project, I'd be happy to give you a copy of the plans as well. Does anyone here hear this one? If not, I'll just try and explain it standing up. So many of you are probably familiar with this project. It was necessitated by the town's development of Deerfield Avenue extension in advance of the construction of the police station. And it involves removing the Girl Scout House that's currently behind Town Hall and replacing it with a new facility next to the Hamlin School. So what you have before you is a site plan review application for the new house off of Laura Lane next to the, the Hamlin School. And to orient you in this drawing, this is the Hamlin School building here. This is Gay Street running over here, oh, sorry, Gay Street runs this way. Here's the Hamlin School. Here's Laura Lane, which comes up, narrows, and turns. The proposed Girl Scout House would front on the narrow portion of Laura Lane. And it would have a side access on the Hamlin side of the property. The parking spaces for the proposed Girl Scout House would be shared spaces with existing spaces on the Hamlin site. The town would repave this portion of the Hamlin site and restrike those spaces so that they're on the side of the street where the house would be, on the side of the parking lot where the house would be as opposed to on the side where the school is now. You have copies of the construction drawings, and you have package as well. And Bob Bowden, who's the designer and the builder, will be constructing the house. This is here, if you have any questions. It will be designed to be a residentially appearing structure. Looks like a small cake house. It's the same size as the existing Girl Scout House that's behind Town Hall with the exception of the fact it's all on one floor. So the existing Girl Scout House has a first floor and has a basement. This will be all on one floor, so it's handicapped accessible. So it'll be a fully accessible, code compliant new structure to replace the old cottage that's behind Town Hall now that's used by the Girl Scouts. And has been used for the last fifty years. The floor plans are included as well, if you have any questions about those, you can look at those. But we are really just requesting your approval of the site plan on this. This would be approved as a limited environmental impact and site plan review of an exempt use. This is exempt under the Dover Amendment. In that general law, chapter forty-eight, section three, as a non-profit educational facility. The board under the Dover Amendment is allowed to consider bulk and height of structures, setbacks, and parking related to exempt use. And I think we have addressed all of those. The bulk and height of structures are permitted by zoning. The house is located on the site within the required setback apartments. In fact, it's, it's set back further from the longer portion of Dover, of Laura Lane. So it fronts on the small portion of Dover, of Laura Lane, and has a forty-foot setback from that. It also has a forty-foot setback from the remainder of Laura Lane, even though that's not required, that's a setback. All the trees that are now in place between the long portion of Laura Lane and the Hamlin School will remain in place. This puts the house on the grass area, not on the tree area. And Dan Downey mentioned that here as well, in case you have any questions.
Wow. Sorry. I guess, I, now I didn't see, so I didn't notice any walkways in the plan, but it's very faintly there is, there are apparent walkways that do go from this one.
There's a walkway from the parking spaces to the side of the building. While the front of the building faces Laura Lane, there's also a side entrance that you can see on the, on the floor files of the house that would have a deck and a side door. That's a handicap accessible entrance. It will really be the principal entrance. So there'll be a path right from the parking spaces to that entrance to the house. And that'll go into the kitchen area.
Side of the house with the fireplace.
That's right. And the house is a single-story structure. It's built to look like a cake, it has no upstairs. I believe it has cathedral ceilings. And it's just two large meeting rooms on the first floor, and then it has an unfinished basement.
Nora, who owns the building? Is it, is it the Girl Scouts?
The Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, only existing building behind Town Hall, and they will be the owners of the new property as well. It'll be used by the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts as well as all the local Girl Scouts in town.
And the, the property is owned by Westwood or the Girl Scouts?
The property is, was owned by the town. It was originally a part of the Hamlin School. We separated it out at the last town meeting. And the, the school department released care custody control to the board selectman. The board selectman transferred the parcel to the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts in exchange for the parcel that the Girl Scouts previously owned behind Town Hall. So that's now the town's property behind Town Hall, and this is now the Girl Scouts property.
Will this have a Laura Lane address?
It may have a Gay Street address or a Laura Lane address, that hasn't been determined yet. I know that the building commissioner recommends a Gay Street address because the, you enter it through the parking that's off of Gay Street. You enter through the school parking.
It's not by where the parking is.
That's right, that's where the parking is. The front door is on Laura Lane. But people coming to the site will enter through the Gay Street entrance to Hamlin School. So he's recommending they have a Gay Street address. I don't think the fire department has weighed in on that. The selectman's office issues the addresses.
Almost always, where the main entrance for emergency access is. So Gay Street would be the logical...
Then they're best. And would they, would they use, town, like, waste disposal? Trash pickup?
They do, they do now, they have a residential trash container to dispose their trash, right? So it'd be the same, same procedure.
Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, well, I have no problems with this project at all. However, you look closer, there has to be about ten different waivers here. For this submittal, some of these things we have absolutely never waived before.
Except for Dover Amendment, Limited EIDR application. So I prepared that application, and I prepared the decisions for the other Limited EIDR approvals. And it's consistent with those other decisions that you've issued. So for instance, the, the church on Blue Hill Drive, amendments to the parking lot for Saint Margaret Mary's, hail reservation parking lot facility. All of these Dover Amendment properties, you have reviewed and waived all of the requirements.
Nora, I mean, some of you know the topography on the, you know, there's not, there's not a single couple logical line.
I submitted a, a contour plan from the GIS that has two foot contours on it to show the existing topography. I submitted a contour plan from the GIS that has two foot contours on it to show the existing topography and the no planned grade changes. The foundation hole will be the only excavation on the site. Existing grading is the same as the proposed grading. The only thing not shown on those plans are the utility lines, which are now being soaked down. So there will be water, electric, sewer, and gas all coming up with Gay Street to the property.
So we have had this kind of application before, but they did show all these things. And they didn't ask for a waiver.
Because they were disturbing, they were making grade changes. We are not. There are no proposed grade changes here.
So are the waivers met to Google?
Yes.
In total?
So in the application, you can grant the waiver so that it requested in the application. If there's anything that's, if you feel to be necessary for you to make your decision, then it would arrive.
No, there isn't. It's just the fact that, that we've never done this much waivering of requirements and submitted plans with.
So sections, seven point three point three of the zoning bylaw is a section in our EIDR bylaw that pertains to exempt uses. And it specifically requires that the planning board waive any documents not necessary for the decision that they're being asked to make. So if you see anything that's requested in a waiver that's necessary for your decision, we will submit it. I put everything that I found not necessary for the decision and requested a waiver of those, those sections of law.
I'm just concerned that no one's going to come in, you know, some kind of thing and say, you know, you didn't require that for this other project. Because we have some quite extensive applications from the churches and the.
We have, for, for what was needed to review it. So if there are grade changes, we need to show grade changes. If there are parking areas, we need to show parking areas.
Yeah. On that particular subject, Nora and I had a rather spirited debate because I took the position, why are you doing any of this? It's a Dover Amendment use. You need to show both dimension, parking. And Nora quite eloquently and accurately said, well, the way the planning board has dealt with these is through these waiver requests and we want to be consistent. So that's why you're, you're seeing it done way more.
Your position is already doing more than you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, legally, yeah, I, I think, you know, if, if somebody was, came in here and was real aggressive, they, they could push you hard. But, you know, you can push back.
Because someone would actually, we don't even need to be here.
But we do have a bylaw section.
We have a bylaw.
Specifically to require exempt uses come before the floor.
And it's, and it's actually a well drafted, narrow bylaw. It's better than most Dover Amendment bylaws. I'm, I'm just making a point. That is that other extreme that's been taken by one.
Yes, that has been taken, but we do not give a free pass to Dover Amendment users. They come and they present everything you need to make your decision and I believe we've done that.
Do we, do we have any information on the site itself or anticipating ledge or?
So we've had site tests done. We've gone down six feet and have not found ledge. We have found boulders, isolated boulders that have to be removed. Bob is the contractor. He's going to do the excavation for the site. If we do find that there's rate of unanticipated material to be removed, then the DPW is going to provide some assistance.
How, how deep is the foundation?
Ten feet.
The area length is twenty eight by twenty five and there's addition twenty two by eighteen.
And how deep do you go down?
How deep is the foundation? Here's where we go, about seven feet, seven foot six.
So it's just a foundation and a slab on top?
It wouldn't be a slab. It'd be wood construction. It'd be a basement. Looking at a basement, then wood frame construction above it.
Unless we unfortunately found a lot of ledge.
Then if there's a ledge issue, then.
Oh, so you're clearing out for a basement?
Yes, excavation for a basement.
The intention is to provide an unfinished basement, but if we hit ledge, so we've gone down six feet and have not hit it. If we go down eight feet and we hit it, we'll change our plans and we'll have a crossface foundation as opposed to a full basement.
Is there a reason why we're not going to get eight foot? You said seven six?
Usually seven six.
So we're left with a seven six finish or a seven feet?
Yeah, usually the base is about seven six, so that'd be from the slab up to the.
For future use if they want to use it.
Utilities, fresh and stuff like that, you're going to.
We don't want to, we don't want to encourage any use of the basement because it's not handicapped accessible between the floors.
It's intended for a storage area. They could do it, they could do it, but it's not, it's not a finished area. It's not being designed to be.
It could be used for storage, but we don't want to encourage it to be used for program or anything like that. Got away from that by giving them additional space on the, on the first floor, so it was all on one floor.
Okay. Okay. Yes, sorry. I'm sorry.
Is there access to the basement, like internally?
Internally, there's an internal staircase, yes.
And there is a blockout as well from the outside?
There is as well.
Did, were the issues resolved with the local Girl Scouts? Because I know, I might have missed this, but I know there was some concern about the ownership of the property. I just, I know there was something went on with that. Has that been resolved?
I believe there's still a dispute between vendors of the local Girl Scouts and the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts. And they are continued, they have a legal manufac, that's on.
The, the local Girl Scout group has sued Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts with respect to an agreement from the nineteen eighties. Yeah, the local Girl Scouts feel gives them some right over property rights over the property. So, but the town is not a party to that. It wasn't a record agreement.
Is there concerns that the Girl Scouts of Eastern Mass could sell off the property?
And one of the ways that we've addressed that, Dave, is, you know, we, the town has been, been trying. This is why Mike asked me to come because I'm in the middle of all this. The town has negotiated with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts a right of first refusal. So if they were to try and sell it, the town would have the opportunity to purchase it. Not only that, that, you know, you know, we're basically giving them a piece of land that's worth the same as the piece of land behind Town Hall and then building a house for them, so there's a real economic advantage. And we're saying, and if you try and sell it anytime in the first, let me say fifteen years, you know, we can recover that economic disparity on a sort of a sliding scale. So there's a real disincentive for the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts to sell it anytime soon. And we would have the opportunity to buy it or to offer it to a local Girl Scout organization to purchase it.
I think in the long and short of it is we're selling, we, we had the transaction between the parties that we can have the transaction, but we did everything we could because we're building a building that's going to cost a significant amount of money for the local Girl Scouts. And the full intent of the board of selectmen is to have it available for the long term, for, for the use of the local Girl Scouts. And so we've done everything, everything we can to ensure that that will occur and that we will intercede if at some point there's a change of heart on the part of Eastern Mass or if assured us they have no intention in selling it. If for some reason there is, there is a change of heart on their part in the foreseeable future, not darkening, at least twenty years, the town will intercede and exercise its right of first refusal, provided that we. The only thing we can't do is we cannot lock the hands of a future town meeting or town board of selectmen. But we are leaving behind documents that say to them, this is what we intended to do and we hope you will honor it at your point when you're in charge. But we can't force, we can't obligate them. It's the only thing we can't do. But we've done everything we're possible.
We've also worked closely with the local Girl Scouts to design the building. And we've provided meeting space for them during the period of time when they will not be able to use the old Girl Scout House. So that's, that's available for Girl Scout meetings for the next couple of weeks and then it'll, it'll be demolished. And from that point on, Girl Scout meetings will be held in the ICC or at local schools. And the town will put the bill for the meetings that are in the local schools, we're accommodating them by scheduling them, by moving the materials that they have, storing it until they're ready to move it into the new building. Bob and I met with the Girl Scout representatives, local Girl Scout representatives, and designed the structure very carefully to match the space that's available in existing buildings, but to provide much more pleasant and code compliant, handicapped accessible spaces. So I, I think it's a, it'll be a great building for the future for the local Girl Scouts to use, hopefully for the indefinite future.
So other than the normal conditions, are there any conditions required here?
I don't believe there are, unless there's something that the board gets concerned over.
All right, I move that we grant all ten, a request for a waivers and that we prove the EIDR.
The normal conditions.
The normal, I guess the normal.
Second.
You have a comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
And the Girl Scouts, thank you.
Next, third material movement, special permit hearing for public hearing for Seventy-Ninth Country Lane. Proposal to remove, fill, and regrade property associated with proposed additions for single family residents.
Edward J. Richardson, three thirty-nine Washington Street, Benham. I represent the owners of Seventy-Ninth Country Lane, which is the Federal Investments Partners. And it's a LLC. And the manager of Federal Investment Partners, Shakti Elserabi, is here with me tonight and will answer any of your questions, but briefly, I want to go over what the nature of the application is. This is a basically redevelopment of a parcel of land on Seventy-Ninth Country Lane. A single family residence, an addition being put on, a garage is being built. And in, during the construction, there would be, there'll be a net removal of approximately a thousand cubic yards of fill from the site. And that thousand cubic yards, believe it or not, will be going to the next project in, on Stone Mill Drive, Port Easton Mill Drive. Okay, but there is no truck, it's filled, being trucked into the site. It is basically being regraded. And we submitted the plan to the town engineer. The town engineer submitted comments. And the project engineer responded to those comments and I believe he addressed all the concerns the town engineer had. I believe a couple of points that he pointed out were a rain garden to the, on one side of the driveway and wanting to ensure that the drainage, that the property drains towards that rain garden. And other than that, I believe all the points were addressed. The only waivers the applicant would be asking for will be the waiver for section seven point one point two point two, which is the requirement for two foot topographical plans of the putting properties. We believe that under the circumstances, that would be excessive. Applicant also requested a waiver on the section seven point one point two point four to show lateral support. There is no lateral support issue here. There is no excavation which is going to adversely affect any neighboring properties. And that's basically it. It's a street removal of fill to accommodate construction of the garage. And it is less than twenty-five thousand square feet of surface area and any stormwater management issues will be handled administratively by the Conservation Commission. It's not, does not require any permits from the Congress. And that's pretty much a summary of the, of the, of the application. You have the original plan, the revised plan, which incorporates the town engineer's initial comments and the town engineer's subsequent report based on the revised plan.
Is the rain garden on the plan now?
Is what?
Is the rain garden on the plan?
I don't believe, I, I believe it is.
Yes, it is.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, I, they addressed all the comments on the plan. They showed details of it. And if everything's constructed as shown on the plan, then it should be sufficient. That, one of my concerns was the grading of the driveway to make sure it is graded into that rain, swell, or rain garden. It's not directly shown on the plan, but that can be something handled if I go up there during the construction to ensure that.
That could be one of the conditions of the approval and that would be handled during construction.
Would like to mention that the driveway area there, impervious area, it is not different in size than the original driveway that was discharged into the street. So the net increase.
Excuse me. This is Mr. Elserabi. He's the manager. He's the manager of the LLC and owns the property.
So that the net increase in, in water on, off the driveway is, it's, it's not zero, it's million.
What I was going to say is, well, shape, Mr. Elserabi pointed out a good point. If you look at the plan, you'll see that the total impervious area after construction will be approximately the same as it was before construction. Only difference is that the roof drains from the dwelling will actually be, be drained into, 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 into the, eventually into the street. Storm drains, all right? Whereas, so actually the impervious area is kind of washed on this one.
And yet, is this one of, one of the two houses that are being reconstructed there? It perks up high, the driveways wind up.
I don't, I don't know. I don't believe so.
One was done a few years.
The only thing that's being done is.
One next to it and one next to down built.
Right. I'm not aware of that, you know, but I drove by, I didn't notice the other one, but when I drove by, I looked at this one.
Two remarkable looking structures.
Do you agree that the impervious surface is about the same because I just.
I couldn't tell from the plan.
I was looking at it, doesn't.
On paper, it looks.
What I'm saying is if you look at, if you look at the driveway constructed now and then you back out the pavement, which is under the existing garage we did, you know.
Well, yeah, we could do that, but it's still impervious.
Exactly right.
But you're saying after you infiltrate the house.
I'm saying the post-construction situation as far as the amount of impervious material is approximately the same as the pre-construction situation. The only difference being is that impervious material being the garage itself has roof drains. And that is, that is going into the system.
Same.
Right.
The fact that it has the roof.
Right, so.
Not the fact you have a driveway.
Yeah, the, the existing house had a roof drain that discharges into the drain system. It's connected directly, so, so that was connected to that existing system.
But it does not cause a runoff situation, basically what I'm coming up with.
My suggestion is we should make an effort to narrow the driveway. You've got eighteen foot driveway all the way down, which is, you know, two lanes roadway.
It, it allows for a turnaround too and.
Well, the turnaround's fine.
And narrow driveways have a tendency to generate on-street parking.
So is there on-street parking a problem here?
No.
Country lane is a difficult lane that because a lot of people use it as a, as a shortcut in the morning.
Yeah.
So really you need to have the space for the people to turn around within the driveway.
Oh, yeah, I, I, that's a very good, you know, the turnaround's very good.
You think that's under the scope?
Yeah, I know.
We're not redesigning the lanes, but I'm not asking a redesign.
I'm just saying that, you know, it's a good thing to minimize impervious surface. And this driveway could have been narrowed.
However, though, with the, with the net zero discharge, we have put on the plan the rain garden, which we are willing to discuss with the, with the town engineer as we're constructing to make sure the town engineer is happy with the rain garden and the size and the drain how it drains.
Yeah, no, this could be, to me, it could be a little bit better.
Again, we're here, we're here for the earth and we're, we're not here for a site plan review, you know what I mean, so.
Any other questions, comments for the board? Okay. Anyone for the public? Nora, just checking.
Yeah, the boundary that you done.
The microphone doesn't seem to be working.
It isn't. You can, but we will have in trouble, so. It's dead, Nora. It's dead, yeah.
What, the microphone or the laptop?
No, laptop. That is it. Um, yes, you can bring your laptop.
My name is Paul Pender, I live at eighty-seven Country Lane. I am directly downhill of this seventy-nine. Net zero, not true. No fill, you know, a thousand coming out, nothing going in, baloney. I have pictures that I can show you of load after load after load of fill coming back in. I'll show you a video of some runoff, that if you think a rain garden's gonna handle this, no, I'll be surprised. This is my driveway, that's the pole on the street, you can see the silt going down the road. That's the runoff on my driveway, I never had a drop in six years. This boulder's coming over the retention stuff. I have two inches of soil and silt that was, was my, you know, was my grass, but that's gone. And my driveway's being undermined, I mean, I'm gonna see chipmunks circling down the other street. It's ridiculous. That's, that's zero runoff right there. Impressive, isn't it looking strange? The catch basin's full of silt. I have silt pictures that I can show you.
The driveway wasn't in back then, at the time of the runoff.
That was last week. I can show you the day.
Could I address one point though, real quick?
Yeah.
You said baloney adds to the no fill. If you look at the plan that was submitted, it does show.
I live next door, I've seen the trucks.
I know, the net is going to be a net removal, there is fill.
I don't believe it, I'm sorry, I've seen the trucks, I've seen trucks in there four-thirty in the morning dumping fill.
This is all engineering calculations.
Wait a second, listen, he's got the.
I can go down the list here.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Keep things directed this way, aside that, and go back and forth.
I mean, you can ask these guys, they had it come by last fall, it was four inches of mud in my whole driveway. I have never had a drop, that driveway's been there six years, I've never had a drop in any of mine. Since they, they took a grade that went like this, and there's something here that says fifteen degrees of slope on the lot, on the lot line. That's forty-five degrees right now, forty-plus. And I believe, he surveyed the land himself, I don't know if you can have a poll and survey the land, but he did it. He says he didn't, but I was there and I was talking to him the day he did it, before I knew who he was. I was trying to help him because I knew what the thing was. And I believe that the wall he's putting up is actually encroaching on my property, instead of giving themselves a couple of feet to maybe work with it, that wall, they can't maintain that wall. I'd like to show you the wall, because it's unsafe. They put it on a foundation of pine needles, it's used trestle blocks. If you can tell me that this is safe, and I brought my concerns to the building department, so they told me to come here.
Is there a building permit issue?
Yes, a building permit.
There is a building permit issue.
This is. Building permit is not an issue.
Well, this wall isn't on the building permit. This wall is not engineered at all, and it's not on the permit. That's the house, you can see the wall going up the side.
Sorry, is your house the house of the?
I'm on the left.
All right.
I had a bad, I stand problem last year, and I was getting morning sun at seven AM. I get the morning sun at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock now, so that, I mean, I don't know how that ever got past the building department, but.
So again, this is.
I mean, I read things in the, in the Plan Board rules, that architecturally has to be in tune with the neighborhood, but it's mostly under the, the business stuff. But I mean, there's so many things, I have them all written down here. Seven-one-four-three, area in depth of fill, proximity to street and lot line. That wall is either on my lot line or over my lot line. You guys have conditions for grades and slopes, I mean, you can see that slope, that's way more than fifteen degrees. That water always drains to the road, now it drains on my land, and you saw the runoff. I don't feel there's any way a rain garden's gonna catch that amount of water, and we get those storms a lot.
This was an existing house with an addition on it?
Yeah.
But, where the siding goes all the way back, so it looks like it's a, looks like it's a whole.
No, I think they have.
They left one wall, they left the kitchen wall way in the back, it's a brand-new house.
Again, there are no building permit issues.
So, so this is another one where.
It's a rebuild.
But this is another incident where the material, sufficient amount of material was removed before they realized it needed an earth.
Well, what, no matter how you cut it, you're limited to two, two hundred cubic yards of material moving around. And even though there is gonna be a net removal of material, you know, and this is a work in progress, you know, quite frankly, you know, that you have to get the special permit through the earth to move around, the earth, the planning board. And there's a, the plan.
There was no intent to do that until I went to the building department.
The plant, the plan shows the existing grades, which were substantial, and also the proposed grade. So it's all shown on the plan.
So when an application is submitted for a building permit, the question is asked, how much earth material movement will there be in relation to this project? And the answer that came back was less than the accepted allowed.
Seems like every week we have one where, oh, it's a hundred ninety-nine until someone complains.
It's like our record is perfect here, with every one of these, the people went ahead and did it for us, and then come to us after.
So, you're saying that while more than two hundred was taken out, the plan was to bring it back, so that.
Oh, no, what I'm saying is, good as a plan, is, the ultimate, okay, you know, final result of the project, is that there's a, there's a removal of a thousand yards of fill, when all the dust is all silt. The rest is being moved, there is still being placed and still being removed. So the net, there's gonna be a net removal of one thousand forty-five cubic yards.
So when was two hundred?
Which is the time the building permit is not predicted to be over two hundred, so it's an error of five hundred percent.
The building, the building inspector does not require you to submit a report of what filling and, and removal, you know, you're doing. I mean, this is a common occurrence.
Most of the stuff that went on, I'm trying to throw.
It's happening all the time, and ladies complain, other than a cease and desist order when we discover.
That's exactly right.
There's no penalty, there's no.
What happened, what happened in this case wasn't factored as a cease and desist order, I'm saying, go get the special permit that's required by the planning board to, and submit the engineered plan, showing the existing grades, the proposed grades, the amount of fill being placed, or the amount of fill being removed, et cetera. And that's it. There was no, there was no, there was no building violation under the zoning bylaw, or no building violation under the state building code in play right now. And the building inspector said, go to the planning board, apply for a special permit, give them the engineered plan, fully engineered plan, showing the existing conditions on it, and the, and the post-instruction conditions, that's what you have to do, and that's exactly why we're here.
Is the engineer's plan for that submitted?
Yes.
It's on the plan here.
It is not.
What's that?
Is that, that's, is that a new one?
No, this is not revised.
It's a modified plan, yeah.
Okay, so can I see the?
You can keep this, not, okay, so what about this?
So are you gonna put a footing under that?
Whatever is designed, that is approved by the town engineer, that's what.
No, 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 I'm asking, where are you gonna put a footing under that wall? Do you think my children play under that wall?
This could be a building conditions issue, as opposed to a finish conditions issue, so I think we need to object.
And before, what are you asking?
I'm asking you here from now.
And as we hear from, I don't know, I don't see any of those things you mentioned on the plan, so how can we be assured that?
What, what things?
The rain garden and the roof recharge and things like that.
The rain garden's not, yes, it's labeled on the.
Oh, where?
And it's just meant, I believe it's just meant to address the purpose, it's not meant to address the site.
It shows that you've got a base two of the plan.
The wall, I noted, it was built before the plan was submitted, so.
So the wall's not on the plan?
No, there's a detail for the wall, it shows it.
Oh, this one, I just have one plan.
What I'm saying, the wall that's up there now was put before the plan was submitted. I don't know, maybe they had a plan, but.
It has no plan.
We didn't have it.
I'm just looking at this plan here, so is there another plan that?
There was a subsequent plan, we couldn't see what.
Here is the.
This is the only one I have from first time.
Reminds the.
No, okay, hang on, I brought some extras.
So, what was the original grade, Jeff, relative to this wall? This wall shows to be about fourteen.
That's a much better one.
Tall. How much was brought in? Do you know what the original grade was?
Yeah, they showed on.
The original grade is the bottom of that wall.
So let's say the top of the wall, one oh eight, bottom of the wall, it's at one oh five, so. It's tough to tell, because.
This, this wall, this picture here, the bottom of those blocks is the original grade.
So they filled about four feet?
Three to four feet.
All the way down the side?
It looks like it steps, and so.
So all that was brought in prior to the issuing of a special permit for earth material movement?
And the back is all terraced with more of those things.
Last call.
There's, there's a picture of the side of the house. There's a picture of the side of the house, you can see the section of that wall, then that's four feet plus the hallway up that side. At the end of the blocks, you can see where the runoff comes down off that hall side and down onto my property is the other side of that retention wall. And it's all, it's muddy silt and huge rocks.
Now, where's the rain, where's the rain?
The driveway, that's probably.
One thing I have to point out, you know, is, again, this is a, this is a construction site, and.
Not, not on the left here.
Although it's.
Not unfinished, sir.
It is a construction site, and not anything is unfinished yet. As a matter of fact, it can't be finished because of the cease and desist until the special permit is issued.
So, it appears to me, I'm gonna ask you as an engineer, it appears to me, that's a significant raise to the neighboring property. And the rain garden, is all of the rainwater off the roof being brought out underground, or is it just directed?
It's not shown on the plan, I guess.
Jeff, have we generally?
If that's, ultimately, if that's what's being constructed, yeah, right now, as it's being designed.
Jeff, usually, you've asked for a swale or something to catch that water, because it just, it's gonna run off into the neighbor's land.
It ran off before, which it did, but right now, it's at an extreme slope, because it's under construction. So I believe more is running right now. Will the final outcome, if it's built to this plan, we're not increasing the slope as shown on this plan from before to after.
It's just raising it up?
Yeah, we're raising it up, and you're adding a wall.
And how far off the property line is this wall?
It's not.
It's, it's right on the walk line.
It can't be on it.
It can. So a wall or fence, not exceeding six feet, can be on the property line. There's no setback requirement for a wall or fence, no tolerance of six feet. It's not wise to build it on the line, because you can't maintain it, or even construct it without entering any neighbor's property.
That's correct.
So, you should not build a wall.
Is there a survey done?
He did it himself.
Okay.
Shaki, you surveyed it.
Okay, you saw a registered land surveyor with me on site. This plan is scanned by a registered engineer, you're gonna stop, he said, he wasn't surveyed by an engineer.
You weren't there that day?
I was helping him, yes.
So just to get back to where we're supposed to be, but the board has to do is review the plan that we got, and determine if the plan would result in conditions that would be approvable under the earth material movement special permit. That's the question that's before you. This is another issue about the existing conditions, that's different than the plan. I think both have to be addressed, but the only one that could be addressed by this board is the finish conditions that are proposed in the plan. So we need to hear from Jeff, if he feels that he has enough information to advise the board that the finish conditions would meet the requirements, the findings that are needed to be made to approve this.
I would, I'd like a little more time to look at.
You need more information.
Discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So we go through this process, and so he says it should do it. What it doesn't do?
If it doesn't do it, and the water running on their property, onto your property, you have a cause of action.
That's exactly right.
Which means what?
You hire one of these guys.
You would have to sue them for the damage that they're doing to your property. That's the, that's what you would have to do to the existing conditions.
As a resident, you're my, you're my vehicle, you're supposed to protect me, this is what this is for.
So what the board can do, the earth material movement special permit, is to protect you in only allowing plans to be approved that meet the conditions. So that's what we need to hear from our engineer, if it meets the conditions. It's not a case of the interim construction period, which looks horrible. I agree, I feel for you, having to live with the conditions that are there now. I have concerns with that, but that's a separate matter than the finish conditions that the board has to consider whether they would approve or not. So it should have been, the approval should have come before this board, before the first shovel was in the ground. When the building permit application was applied for, there should have been an answer to the question, will you need an earth material movement? That answer should have been, yes, we absolutely will, we're moving a thousand cubic yards, not two hundred cubic yards. The wrong answer was given to that question. So that's why we're here today with these conditions, but that's not what this board is designed to review. They're not here to review the existing conditions, they're here to review.
I understand that, so when it's all said and done, the pile of crap falls on my lap, and I have no recourse, I have to pay money to hire someone.
What the board has to approve is the plan that's before it. If construction is not done according to that plan, the town has recourse. If construction is done according to that plan, and the engineering on that plan was faulty, and you still get water damage, then that's between you and the property owner. But if there is a plan that shows that it works, and the town approves it, and the plan is constructed as shown, then what the town has involved in it is complete.
Can I just ask a question, when you're saying that the town approves this plan, does the town then monitor that the construction adheres to the plan so that?
Yes, it does.
It does?
It does.
And that's not at the cost of the adjacent homeowner?
No.
That's part of the building permit requirement, and the earth material movement requirement?
Is part of the permit, so you guys occasionally, every month, go and you review and you look at it.
So one of the requirements that I would recommend that the board, but if it decides it's going to issue this permit, I would recommend a condition that requires monitoring, that requires the applicant to notify the town engineer at certain stages, and the town engineer to be able to review the construction and make sure it's in accordance with the plan. If the board has concerns, they also have the ability under the bylaw to require a performance bond to be established, to have funds held aside in case there are corrections that need to be made. So you have that authority. But the big question we have, that the board can't make its findings on this until it hears from the engineer, that he's satisfied that the plan achieves the goals. But I don't think Jeff can tell us that.
Could I, could I address that issue with more time? One of the problems with this thing is, this, you gotta, it's like, it's in the water right now.
I agree.
It's a construction site, you're gonna have silt problems, you're gonna have all sorts of problems until this thing is wrapped up. And the reason why, is it's under a cease and desist, and the cease and desist will not be taken off until the special permit is issued. We're, we're committed to following, you know, that everything that's on that plan, including what's on the detailed plan, will be built, okay, to the satisfaction of the building inspector, or whoever monitors the construction on the site. And the second thing is, any reasonable condition you have for, you know, siltation control or anything like that, would be acceptable. And the third thing is, this is going, this is less than twenty-five thousand square feet, so, but it's still subject to administrative review on the, under the stormwater management with the Conservation Commission, okay? Now, I sent the plan to Karen, and I sent the calculations, you know, from the engineer, showing it is, it is set into administrative review, it does not require a hearing, okay? What I'd like to see is this thing get back on track for the sole purpose of taking that and turning it back into a side yard, not, not a battle zone like it looks like right now. Right now, you've got an unfinished building. Right now, you've got an unfinished building sitting there with no activity on it. And the thing is to get this finished, all right? If there are not, no building code violations and there are no zoning code violations.
There is a zoning code violation.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm outside of...
That's what I wanted to, we're gonna drive the point home. It shouldn't be here while you're here talking to us. So, we shouldn't be talking and we shouldn't be held...
That's exactly right.
We don't feel compelled to move on your timeframe when you ignored ours.
I'm just pointing out the reality of the remedy of the situation.
I get that, and the one person, maybe the other butter, who is interested is here discussing it with us. So, he's the one looking at this, these gentlemen aren't living in that house. So, he's the one looking, he wants to discuss it.
He wants the protection that is accorded by the bylaw et cetera. You know, but we can't make it a perfect world. It is a construction site, it's a perfect world.
Shouldn't have been.
So, you... We were not aware of, what I know we have to do with the... That's here and there, but what we're trying to say, I think, living at the situation it is, you're gonna keep getting a lot of videos from him every rainstorm with salt washing because we can't stop it because we have a cease and desist, that's all. We're trying to help, so...
We want to be sure from our resources that what is designed is sufficient so that we're not in a position, we've done everything we can to make sure once you've built it and sold it and moved away, this gentleman and any other butter is not going to be in an adverse situation. Until we hear from him, we won't feel comfortable with that.
Would it be possible to draft any conditional... A conditional condition basically stating that, you know, that after completion of construction, if any defect or if any undue runoff or whatever affects any of the budding properties downhill, you know, the applicant will be required to remedy that situation. Right now, there's nothing remedying the situation.
So, what's the, right now, I'm just trying to figure out who appropriate people are. The conservation commission, is there agreement, is it just an administrative review? It isn't over half an acre?
Yeah, that's right.
Definitely under half an acre.
It's all ahead, it's twenty-five thousand.
No, it's not. You're not being assertive.
Not being, yeah, well, the whole lot is only twenty-three.
Yeah, I had the project engineer send me a calculation. My calculus skills are somewhat attenuated, so I didn't do the calculations.
The lot's not large enough to require a conservation commission approval for the stormwater management application. It's an administrative...
It's administered.
So, in reviewing it though, Karen, our conservation specialists will confer with Jeff. She's relying on Jeff too. So, on either ground, it comes down to Jeff being comfortable that the plan that's proposed is sufficient to achieve the objectives of the bylaw.
Okay, but under the stormwater management by law, does she have the power to order them to make temporary arrangements to stop any, I mean, it's still patient?
Yes. Yes, but they're only, temporary arrangements or any arrangements can only hold back so much. You know, they can't build a dike. If there's that much water flowing, the stormwater control is not going to be sufficient. Temporary controls are not gonna be sufficient. So, the condition that's there is a problem. So, I agree that...
So, only the wall, building the wall is the only thing? Or there's no temporary measures to stop any additional siltation on any storm that might happen tomorrow?
They can put silt sacks out, but they won't hold back the amount of water we saw in the picture, that's just not gonna do it. So, I agree that the most important thing is to get the work done and stabilize the site as soon as possible. So, if Jeff feels that he could review further and advise the board if there are changes that need to be made, that might work, but only if there's a significant performance bond put in place. They would fund those changes. We can't go on faith here.
But it's supposed to rain tomorrow quite a bit.
Well, tomorrow's too late. Stabilization will take more than a day to achieve here. The rains tomorrow are going to cause washouts, there's no doubt about that.
Stabilization of the site for satisfaction of the town engineer, that'd be...
Can we order something like that? Or just should the conservation agent be the one wearing that?
If you intend to vote tonight to approve it, that can be a condition of your approval. And I don't see how you could vote to approve it without that being...
Right, but we can't vote to approve it until we get more information.
The suggestion before you is to vote to approve it with the condition that if the plan that you're approving is found efficient by the town engineer, that a modified plan is required to be brought back to this board and that a performance bond is put in place to pay for the construction of the modified plan.
That would be appropriate condition.
So, how much do we want?
That, I don't know, Jeff. That's seriously not that. He hasn't, yeah, he hasn't...
What you'll be doing is imposing a condition, you know, and if the situation on the site, the fully constructed situation on the site is unsatisfactory, the town engineer would suggest a change and also be able to estimate the cost in an appropriate way.
No, they estimate the cost, would have to come along with the decision. The bond is put in place immediately. You don't get the permit until we get the bond, that's the only way it could work.
I have a question for the town engineer. Is this wall gonna be built from top to bottom? And staggered like, not like it is now, like one on top of the other?
The plan doesn't show exactly how it's, if it's, whether it's level or whether it's sloped. I can't tell.
But either way, when these walls are built, they're normally staggered. I've never seen them on top of each other.
Usually would be, huh?
Yeah, you can, like a offset.
You mean like...
It's a segmented block wall.
They have the block, they're trussed blocks, they're four feet long by two feet high. They have them stacked one on top of the other.
Those are used for terrace effect. They're not locking blocks, that's not how they usually go up. So, these are the type of blocks that you should put up here, set up back.
They do, the vertical joints line up?
I believe they start off with that.
Yeah, there you go, right there. And there's no locking mechanism? And they're just dropped right on piney?
Well, there's a lock on each side of the truck.
There is a locking mechanism.
Otherwise, it's not gonna hold anything.
This is only a two layout, it's a four foot blocks, only two blocks. This is a gravity wall, it's two feet wide, six feet long, not four feet, it's longer than four feet. And it's heavy, so it's designed to be a gravity wall.
So, that's how you're gonna leave it, like that?
It's not done, we got stopped, this is not a finished site.
It's a retaining wall, we need to get rejected, the retaining wall is up inside.
You're showing one thing on the plan, so the thing is saying, not answering that, that's what you're gonna do.
So, we need to, so the condition is that we have to make sure it proves the wall.
Yeah, let me go to the site, inspect it, I'll look at it, I'll look at the plan, compare it, and I can report it back to Abby or Nora.
I'm not comfortable doing anything today.
Well, but I'm not comfortable not doing anything and letting the rain go all over the place.
Well, I think, it's not allowed with the way they...
Fighters went under them to get moving, unless they can't let it die. Unless we do something, unless we do something, they can't.
They can't afford to vote.
And it means they're after waiting.
I'm not prepared to vote unless we have...
You, I have a suggestion, you're meeting on the seventh with the FinCom. Do you wanna schedule a half hour meeting before that to get a report from Jeff?
It won't be here.
I have another conflict, so I wouldn't...
Then that doesn't work because it's a special permit, we need forebodes. So, it's tonight or it's on March fifteenth, it's two choices.
Unless I, we schedule that March seventh.
Well, unless we can come up with a number.
Can you do that? Come up with a number? On?
I think I have to, yeah.
It's a quick estimate.
You are constructing all the site work or the down slopes like site work?
What is the bond for?
The bond is to cover any changes in the design that are required. So, if they needed to move that wall, they needed to take it down and rebuild it, if they needed to enlarge the rain door, change the slope of the driveway, if all, everything they could be required to be changed, all added up, what would you get to?
Two fifteen, three hundred? I'm using estimates that we use at the town, private contractors, they're different.
I can meet with you if you...
I wanna get it out.
Excuse me, I've called on the...
Yes, my name is Jack Lally, I live in one twenty Ray Short Drive. And I'm a city member on the zoning board of appeals here in Westwood. I did visit the site a couple of days ago. But my first reaction was with the runoff and the slope and the retaining wall, I believe it's a retaining wall, I don't know the integrity of the retaining wall, but it can hold back all that fill behind it. But I think just looking at it from different angles, that it's very detrimental to the property for lack, which is the Penda House. And it adversely affects it economically and environmentally. So, the board has to look very carefully at that before they approve these plans.
Well, again, what can be done to...
Well, that's up to the town engineer, but I just, I looked at the fence really quick and, you know, I'm sure the town engineer has a lot of questions, but it's just...
Since the wall was there, it gets the slope.
I think it's not very becoming for that end. And I think, you know, definitely affects the property value if you...
Just looking at that wall.
Just looking at that also, looking at the pictures, I'm sorry.
That wall can be easily removed. I think what we try to do is to make it more flat and reduce the velocity of water from running to his property. That wall can be removed and it will be all sloped and grassed. That's the issue against in that picture that you see. What we did, we tried to accommodate his concerns of having a steep slope running down his property. We would be more than happy to move that wall.
You cannot turn a steep slope because then the water would run out to his property, which is in violation...
Originally, that's how the slope was, if you look at the picture, you look at the existing grades. The property, all the property was running to his property.
But now you add it in purpose, then it's increased the runoff.
The contractor speaks for that, I don't, I'm not... The town engineer that can testify to that.
For six years, I never had a drop of dirt on that driveway. And now, every time it rains, I get, you know, you shoveled it off. Of course, because it's...
So, appearance of the wall is not before this board. You cannot vote on the appearance of the wall, you can vote on the integrity of the wall and you can vote on the drainage.
Can we also move the wall back if that will be helpful? But then that's mostly for appearance sake, moving the wall back. Well, then, then you could put bushes in front and stuff like that. No, no, the wall has to be, has to work with the drainage, but in addition to the wall...
Jeff needs to see what wall is built as shown on the plan. That's the most important thing that we need to know. Was the wall built the way it's shown? Because Jeff is reviewing the plans, he needs to see.
I think, given all that's going on, waiting two weeks or so till the fifteenth is not...
I will cancel my appointment on March seventh.
I can't believe that.
So, it's not actually, so it's the fifteenth? So, do you wanna continue appearance of the fifteenth?
Is that enough time for you, Jeff?
And in the meantime, you need to take every measure possible to prevent...
Well, we have a cease and desist, we can't really go and...
Oh, you could put erosion control measures out. Your cease and desist does not prevent that, and in fact, I believe you're obligated to.
Yeah, Karen thinks from the water quality.
Because I'll tell you, we, when a runoff took place, okay, about the end of December, beginning of January, I went over there with the excavator to stabilize, to decrease the slope. Paul goes and takes a video, sends it to the building inspector, he stops us from building even on the building.
I'm not talking about bringing an excavator, I'm talking about getting silt sacks and haydals and get out there and stop the water from...
Sometimes it takes more than that, it depends what the rain can cause. You may need an excavator, that's what I did last time.
Well, you don't have, you can't do that because that's the violation of your cease and desist.
No, I'm trying to stabilize, I have an intent to do something good, but that's what I'm trying to say.
All right, so the board will continue to...
Could I ask my question? I mean, you said you should see if the walls don't pop the way it's listed here, but is this a proper design of the wall with no swale behind it? I mean, there's nothing to stop the water from just running over the top of the wall?
Yeah, you can build a wall that way.
This is a lankai wall?
That's part of what we're gonna look at.
Jeff's gonna, I make a motion that we continue this hearing until March fifteenth at seven thirty in the Cardi Street facility.
We're actually meeting at the Downey, sorry, area.
Oh, done, okay, done.
A second motion.
All those in favor continuing this to March fifteenth of the Downey school.
Next on the agenda, fourteen Stone Meadow Drive.
Next one is Stone Meadow. That's not working, sir. Now, I think the battery's dying, we're here too long. Just speak like you're working for us.
All right, so we need Jeff for this, Jeff?
Can I ask you to take it outside or we have to, some more business to do?
It's easy to go up the side.
Yeah, this door is easy.
It's light and it's gonna still light up.
Fourteen Stone Meadow Drive. David Richardson, three thirty-nine, Washington Street, Massachusetts. Dr. Assad Sayah, and who's the owner of fourteen Stone Meadow Drive and is seeking a special permit to fill a portion of his backyard on that lot as shown on the plan submitted. Again, it's submitted to the town engineer, the town engineer for review. His comments came back, a revised plan was submitted, you know, showing a few things that responded to his comments. And I believe you have the original plan, the revised plan, the town engineer's comments and the project engineer's comments that accompany the revised plan. This is a simple fill job, no construction going on on the site. What the applicant wishes to do is basically have a backyard that he can use. Right now, it was, the lot was very heavily forested and I realize this may be a sore spot for some people. But he wishes to have a flat spot that he can use and that's what he's filling. It's shown on the plan, unfortunately, there will be some trees removed, but he basically wants a portion of the backyard. There's a substantial buffer between all the parcels around there and that's pretty much it. And Dr. Sayah is right here. And one thing, a question I have is, on the application notice, it was his last name, spelled S.A.Y.A.H.
Yeah, S.A.Y.A.H.
Great, because the label on my file had an E.H. and I just forgot about it.
Oh, Z.A.H., yeah.
So, that's basically it. Again, this is a substantial amount of fill. One quarter of the fill was going to be basically borrowed from seventy-nine at County Lane, but that looks like it may be held up. The quality of fill will be commercial grade, non-structural fill, basically clean fill. It's not, I mean, no structures put on top of it, it's gonna be, and that's basically it. It's gonna be commercial grade. Some filling down on the site and he's been told that in order to continue filling, he has to get the special permit before the planning board. And I think we've addressed all the comments of the town engineer. If I missed any, he contacted him for his report.
The only item that was missing was where the material was coming from and I think he addressed that now. My own question, importance of the compaction as they're going just to make sure there's no movement of the slope once it's built and then of course, building of the wall to that spec. That's important, just to make sure that's done as well.
Is the wall at the highest part?
I believe it's four feet.
It's not a high wall.
It's, I think it's less than four feet, I think it goes from just under two to...
The top of the wall, it shows, the top of the wall keeps rising, but what's...
The grade above the wall rises, the wall is not very...
Right. The door goes up with it.
Right, there's a steep grade above the wall.
Yeah, it goes two to four feet, doesn't it?
Yes. Two to four feet on the wall.
The detail on, on the plan shows.
It's like two to four, yeah.
This is at 98, that's at 102, as it goes up.
So again, the building of all this land will increase slope, and it's all headed to your neighbor, and is this gonna cause more runoff into neighboring property?
It's not gonna cause more runoff.
Anywhere?
You know, it'll cause the same amount of runoff, as long as the slope is stabilized. You know, that, that's the problem. If it's not stabilized while it's being made, then yeah, if we get a heavy rain, it'll, it'll wash out the slope. So they've made, they've put on notes for stabilizing the slope as they're building it, so.
Well, they're just, they're not changing the, pretty much the angle of the slope. They're just moving the whole thing over.
Yeah.
So the slope is over short.
Yeah, just to look like the same.
The same, so it's an arbitrary slope.
The same hill that's being moved much closer to the neighbor's property.
So they have grass.
By having the, the flat area at the top now, it's gonna be flat, right?
Yes.
On the other side of the pool?
Yeah. That, could that increase the infestation?
Yes.
Yeah, it makes sense.
There could be a net reduction.
Sort of a lack of, of collect.
The lottery of slope holds up.
Well, that's if they, if they do it the way they're supposed to, then yeah.
So what's there, what's there now in this area where we're doing this plateau treatment?
Dr. Sayah could explain why he wants to, who's in the backyard. Basically, he wanted the backyard for his kids, you know.
So what, so to answer, to answer the question, what's there now? It looks like.
Oh, yeah.
There was a forest there.
Was a forest there.
So we want to cut down some of the trees.
Still have a lot of acreage and forest there. Oh, yeah. Just leave some, some space behind you.
Wait a minute, is this stone, no, drive that goes around?
Yeah, that's the, the emergency connector between Fire Road and Stone Meadow Drive. And before you ask, there was no building permit required. That's why this one was unknown. There was no building permit required. It was never asked to ask because it was never, I didn't need to, to have a permit. So it was just noticed that this work was taking place and the owner was informed that a special permit was required.
So are you satisfied with the plan?
Yes. As long as this follow-up, as long as construction's done.
So I prepared a motion similar to the earlier one we had on No Street. It has findings and provisions.
So, so again, is this, does the stormwater management biologist play it out?
Administrator.
And, and so what kind of things does she do, does the administrator, does the?
Well, she reviews the, the.
She'll review the, the ability of the stormwater management controls to, to meet the requirements of having yield net increase in drainage of the property.
Okay, so, but other than that, nothing, there's no improvements made here. They're just, you just want to make sure everything pretty much stays the same.
It's recharging on the site as it does now. It's just recharging in a different manner.
Closest to the, well, not necessarily.
Most of the flow is going back towards the connector road.
Right.
As it does now.
Is there, is there a neighbor on the top here who's assesses map for law 15? Who's that?
They're all pretty far away outside.
I have a, I have a copy.
Jason Neighbors here in the audience.
Is there anyone here from the public that'd like to comment?
All right.
Our microphone seems to be in trouble.
That's fine. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
My name's Roger, I live at 397 Parry Road. This all started over a year ago, and to your point, there was a forest. There were probably 40, 150 foot trees removed. That was all screening that we saw in our backyard. We own about two acres. I think they own a little over two acres in the back there. Their property is about 25 feet higher from the Stone Meadow coming down to the Fire Road. So if you do look at that line where they're proposing for the two to four foot wall, that's right on our property line. My concern is that there are probably two to three 150 foot pine trees remaining as our final screening. If that wall is built adjacent to those pine trees, regular roots, do we lose those final pine trees? Okay? There is a pitch to that, so there's a two foot to four foot wall that then is supposed to pitch up, and I think there was a comment made earlier today, their land does, where they cleared those 40 trees, have probably another 50 feet in that longer part, but as it comes towards our property line, that slope will be increased. So I'm not as much worried about the water runoff, because again, it's all grass and kind of forest back there for us. I'm more concerned about the destruction of potential more screening that may get harmed based on that wall and the land. And I guess, when I called the town a year ago, the town sent a letter to the owner saying that if you bring in more than two feet of fill, you need to get a permit. About three months ago at 7:00 AM, there was probably 2,000 yards of fill brought in on a Saturday morning at 7:00 AM. So that letter was ignored. I called the town back. It was a cease and desist rating, and now they've applied for a permit. Now, it's the same folks that are doing the property on this prior discussion, that are building the wall and bringing all that in. So we've already kind of seen what the results are in that other property. I prefer that not to happen on our property.
May I say something? I never received anything from the town a year ago, and this work was done in late May, June, when the trees were cleared. I never received.
No, the thousand yards of fill was brought in about a month and a half ago, Saturday morning at 7:00 AM.
But you mentioned that a year ago, I received something from the.
I was told by the town that they sent a letter to you saying that if more than two feet of fill was brought in, that you needed a permit.
I never received any communication. We can go down to town and find that.
I've got a.
Mr. Pat is lying.
Am I? I'm looking for the board to say that along every step of the way that their properties get monitored.
So first question about the trees. My understanding from reading the plans is that the wall is set back about 10 feet from the property line. So if the trees are on your property.
Oh, that's right. I was told it was two feet from the property.
It's 10 feet back, two feet to four feet tall. So if the trees are on your property line, 10 feet is far enough that they should not be impacted by the puddings of the wall. But I also don't know what type of wall it is, or, you know.
Do we have any plans to put a wall?
Yeah, well, it's similar.
I see a dotted line.
Same detail as the one on the other.
A block wall.
It's the same wall?
Set-handed wall. Now, whether they're gonna use the same one on that other property or not, I don't know.
So are there trees in that 10 feet area, or they've been cleared to the property line?
They've been cleared right to the property line.
My opinion is that you tend to clear trees, like the pine trees, you're leaving newly exposed to the elements and to the wind, and you, you tend to have mortality or on that edge.
Oh, if you saw what happened this past week with the snow and the wind, due to all those 40 trees coming down, we almost lost a tree against our house. So the remaining pines that are there used to be blocked, and because of this geographic change, we've already seen, I mean, I can show the pictures in my yard of all limbs that come back.
Could I, could I ask one, one question of the?
Sure.
Uh, where, where is your property in relation to this property? Oh, your, your next door neighbor right down this side?
Yep.
Thanks to the law.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And what, what was the, in a second question, sorry.
Yep.
What was the, what approximately time that, that, that fill was being brought in?
Uh, about two months ago.
Yeah, well, I got a, if you said a thousand yards, I'd get an invoice that shows 195 yards, you know, which is less than 200.
You know what? Jeff was there on the site, so he can, he can share with you. I saw two 18 wheel of truckloads of loan coming in and being bored.
And you bring 15 yards or?
Okay, all right.
So once again, the board cannot win on appearance issues. Clearly changes the look of the environment significantly, but that's not what you're here to determine. You're here to determine if the plan that would be put in place at the, at the completion of this, that would be, the plan that would be implemented, is the plan of the Bible.
Can I say something?
Yes.
What were you thinking of those trees? There's, two years ago, in a, in a windstorm, two of those trees fell towards the house, and they were very dangerous close to the house. And, and actually, one of them, one of the branches impaired on Sunday. So.
No, I just want to make sure that. Irrelevant for evidence.
So that is, if you want to say it on your own trees, it's really kind of irrelevant.
I understand.
Doctor, I'm not upset if you ruin the trees. I, I don't want any of the additional screening to fall because of the wall. That, so my only claim is monitoring what you guys do. All the power.
You want to make sure the trees on your land are not damaged by the work that's done on your land.
And that we don't get any adverse water effects and all that.
Right, so there are bad, there's water effects, but this board is here to determine. But you cannot take into consideration the removal of trees except for the wicking factor and how that relates to the recharge. Defer to Jeff on that.
Gentlemen, who knows more than?
Regarding the, the what, wicking factor?
Well, I'm saying unless that, that is taken into consideration and the, the recharge is different because the trees aren't there, but if you're comfortable that the, that the recharge on, all the water will be handled on the site as it is now, then the board has the ability to grant clear material.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the surface type is changing, yes. The grades are changing slightly, but the, the overall pattern of the drainage is going in the same direction towards that, that corner.
Jeff, the drainage will come closer to our lot line now. I'm not sure that, because of the land, the new, you add 5,000 yards of fill, those 5,000 yards of fill are being brought a lot closer.
Where it comes down the slope, yes, it will be closer to your property as opposed to.
Where it is today.
25 feet backwards coming down the slope and then going in the same direction.
So there used to be a flat area that was full of trees where that water would come down the slope, then puddle, and that, those trees are gone and that flat area is gone. So now is, is there less water coming down that slope to that area, or is that area big enough to recharge?
I would have to do calculation, and that, that wasn't necessarily part of my scope when I was looking at it. You could make it part of it, but that will take more time.
All right, is there a design detail of this wall again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the other one?
Just picture the last one.
Yeah, it looks familiar.
All right. Is the board comfortable making a motion to this?
Board is, board is never comfortable.
I did hear that there's a 10 foot requirement, so will lot line, is the wall can't start for 10 feet?
This plan shows the law sets that. It's not a requirement, but that's the plan. So if they approve this, it has to be built in accordance with that plan.
I was told it was two feet.
So that, so if the special permit is granted, the wall would have to be built as shown on the plan, 10 feet back. The style of wall shown on the plan, the, the calculations would have to bear out as correct.
The style of the wall is the same one we just saw in the picture.
Gravity wall, tonne improvement gravity wall.
So you might come on this.
Well, you can't landscape on.
In front, so you're not looking at the wall. And transit to land, so you'll never get adverse possession, I think.
So I'll incur the cost of 2,500 bucks.
If you don't want to look at something, that's pretty much it.
But to have the board monitor this progress all along to make sure that what they're doing is in accordance with the plan is that's something.
So again, the, the application would be required. It's actually Jeff that goes out and will review to make sure that it's in accordance with the plan.
So are we, someone, do I have a motion to accept this, or are we gonna ask for continue?
I think we're ready. Ready? Jeff, you say that the drainage.
If, if, if it's created at the top to be flat, which it is for the lawn, it'll, it'll hold the water there.
Right.
It'll infiltrate there. The slope, the, the area of the slope isn't, isn't large, so you will get some runoff, but once the slope is established and landscaped, you won't get that erosion.
So is landscaping specified? That's critical here.
Well, erosion control BMPs maintained during site disservice, self efficiencies. The spirit areas shall be long conceived and soon practical following establishment.
But couldn't we just add that with all the maths down to, just not.
Yeah, that, that's a BMP, erosion BMP that they'll have to put in place to make sure the slope doesn't.
Right, so where is that specified?
Well, the erosion control BMPs to be maintained during site disservice.
Oh, so that's implied in the BMPs.
And that gets spelled out in Karen's remote intervention position.
So make a motion that we approve this earth material movement. Can we read this thing? Or should I say, just say that the same positions?
Is everyone comfortable knowing that the findings are the same findings, that you have a previous application, and you want to hear them right out?
I don't know. You, you sent the.
Want me to read them?
Thing you read out before?
Yes, it's the same findings.
Yeah, well, that's all the same stuff.
Okay.
And the same, and the standing conditions, including Jeff's monitoring the site during construction and shorts.
And there's only one way for the trucks to come and go here, I think.
Yes, and so on this one, right, the, the trucks, we still specify that they have to approach from Summer Street onto Law Meadow and the Juston Meadow. They cannot take the emergency connector. That's the only other thing.
Is it the urgency connector passable?
It's a fire.
Not with the boulders in front of it.
So you specify anyway, don't take the emergency.
They, they hear, it's probably removed, and they hear him.
So are the additional conditions about monitoring?
Yes, that is in there.
Great.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll send you probably the decision.
Do I have a second?
Second. For check? Second, yeah.
Any more? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The pool already there? Is the pool already there?
Yes.
The pool's already there.
All right, so before we move on to something, and I just, so we don't forget, would you please sign these decision sheets for the two orthogeo movement special crimes to approve? That way Abby can afford the decisions to send you, the decisions that go according to them, but you don't want to have to wait until immediately.
There was a gulf at the door over here.
Ned, you have to walk this way. Ned?
Do you have to?
Yes. They could set up the alarm.
You're not here? Can you give, you guys grab them and come this way, so they set the alarm on?
Gentlemen, you guys have to walk up the door. They're worried about an alarm going off.
And the door's.
Yeah, no problem.
Get out without walking through the dark.
Janice? Really late.
Really? Is it smelling up or what's going on?
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Please.
Okay, so zoning, you have Abby's recommended changes to the zoning dialogue?
That is not my coat.
Yeah.
I do know.
Is this your client's coat? There's a jacket left here.
Okay, so you have Abby's packet of proposed changes to the zoning dialogue?
This one?
We have a sheet to hand out with one other change that Steve Alman suggested that pertains to the language and argument one for the dealing with age restricted units in the case of a cluster as opposed to a full age restricted OSRD. So what I have here is a clean copy and a red line of that specific change, and then I gave you some examples so that we're clear and we all understand how this would work.
Okay, thank you.
If we could just start with that, because that's something you haven't seen yet?
Yeah, it's, it's not a change, trying to clarify this by making two sentences.
What we were looking to do. So we say, if you have an OSRD that's 100% age restricted, then you take the base number of units and you add a density bonus of three times the base, so you end up with four times the base. So I've given you an example for a 100% down at the bottom there, OSRD yield calculation. If you, if the base calculation gave you 20 units and they were all age restricted, you could end up with age units on the site. Now, if you have an example where you have a cluster of age restricted units in OSRD that has non-age restricted units, if 25% of those units were age restricted in the same, same property, we have a yield calculation with 20 base units, 15 non-age restricted units are just those. 15 non-age-restricted units are just those, 15 units you're allowed. Five of those units are age-restricted, so those five units, they're three times five density bonus, so they turn into 20 age-restricted units. So in that case, you would have 35 units on the site, 15 non-age-restricted and 20 age-restricted. And then I gave you an example of if you had 50% of a project that was age-restricted, that same 20 unit base would get you 15 units overall. So I think that's what we were trying to achieve and I think Steve's recommended.
I didn't change anything, I just made it clear what we wanted to do.
Right, made it clear.
Yeah, and I have more typos and stuff like that.
Typos sent to, well, sent to me because it would be too late all the time Abby gets back.
Okay, so I mean, and there's one big one that I just wanna go over and then I can just give you the rest of them. We keep talking about, you use the word density, we originally said density and bonus. Now we're saying density, it says density increases, and then you changed it to density bonus dwelling units. I think the word density just makes things confusing. I think you just wanna say bonus dwelling units and take out the word, wherever it says density bonus, it should just say bonus dwelling units and it's in a bunch of places. So I mean, those, these are not, again, not substantive, but it makes it understandable.
All right, I have to track that back since Abby was working, so I'm not as familiar with it to know if that relates to a definition that calls for density bonus units or.
Because in the new language, it just says that it's bonus.
Yeah, the word density is very confusing to someone who doesn't understand, you know, just reads this. It's really bonus dwelling units and you need to be consistent with those three words, bonus dwelling units. Sometimes you say bonus units.
Okay, so I'll do a search, so you wanted to always say bonus dwelling units.
Point one is says age-restricted dwelling units, good. But then you get down to, you know, it says bonus density open space dwelling units, that's really confusing. What you really wanna say is additional open space, period. Oh, you don't even wanna say dwelling units in this place, you just wanna say age-restricted to keep it consistent with the, you know, age-restricted, affordable housing, modern housing, historic preservation, and you wanna say additional open space.
What, where are these?
8394.
Yeah.
Page 11.
But again, and that just makes us so much clearer and consistent. So I can give you all of those, make sure you get after me tomorrow, the next day.
Okay. Do you wanna walk through all of the red line changes in the beginning of the document?
Yes. We need to move on to John.
And there's nothing that's changed, right, other than that paragraph which is clarified and.
So on page seven, there are two changes. There's an additional purpose that's been added, section 8.3.1.6, to encourage senior housing development, affordable housing development, historic preservation, and greater conservation of open space. Then there's a definition that's been added, section 8.3.2.4, the definition is for age-restricted dwelling units.
And that you're a little redundant there, the age of 55 years of age, you either say the age of 55 or just say 55 years of age.
Which one do you prefer?
Yeah.
Has reached 55 years of age.
Yeah, take out the first word, age.
Age of. All right.
It has reached.
Has reached 55 years of age.
Yeah, you take out the age of and just say 55 years of age.
All right, and going on to page eight, section 8.3.9.1 is just a section number reference that's corrected. 8.3.9.2 is a rewording of the yield calculation, changes from May to shall. Be submitted on a winter basis and hung where it's part of a preliminary review. Instead of a pre-application conference, and then another section change that's corrected. And we have to step four, just a clarification to the previous whole number of fractions less than 0.5. And we change instead of calling the yield, we call it the step four result, because the yield actually comes after that.
Yeah, that was a good catch. I'll leave that there.
On number 11. We just went through the age restricted, then going down to density bonus open space dwelling units. There's that additional sentence where the calculation density bonus open space units results in a fraction for results less than two, eliminate the fractional part for results greater than two, round up to the next whole number for fractions of 0.5 or greater, and down to the previous whole number for fractions less than 0.5. Add the yield for OSRD, some language change there. And what that's still saying is you can have a bonus of more than 50% of your yield calculation by combining all these other, for instance, affordable housing and modern income and historic preservation of open space, but the exception to that is the age restricted, which can exceed 50%. By nature has to, because it's too many percent.
So how would that work? So what if you were combining those both densities, that and those bonuses?
So I think what that's saying is you can combine all of them, but you're capped at the 50% bonus, which isn't a problem because some of these are very small in basis. So for instance, historic preservation, you get one additional unit. So that's not a big increase to begin with, but the age restricted is such a big increase that I don't think you could really combine it with anything else.
And you can go over a 50% increase with?
With age restricted, but not with any of the others.
So you could go up.
So once you did that, you couldn't do anything else? I mean, so you're gonna be up to 70%.
You're not encouraging extra open space or you're not encouraging affordable housing other than what you're required to provide. Do not encourage historic preservation.
But you technically could do that up to 50% and then do additional.
I don't think that's what it says, are you allowed to say that?
Yeah, I think it does, but.
Let me see. The aggregate yield for an OSRD shall be based on any combination of the bonuses listed above, provided that all other conditions required in section 8.3 are met. Except as permitted in section 8.3.9.4.1, the total number of density bonus units. The OSRD shall not exceed the aggregate 50% of the maximum base number of units allowed for certain yield calculation in section 8.3.9.2. So the exception is except as permitted in.
Section 8.3.
The section that deals with the age restricted, and that section simply says you get three times the density bonus.
You get three times the yield.
Three times the yield would be your density bonus. So it doesn't say you get that and the 50%. So I don't think, I don't think it does.
But I don't think it matters.
But if we can change it, if we wanted to, we can easily rewrite this.
I, and it doesn't matter?
It does if you wanna encourage historic preservation and additional open space preservation in addition to senior housing.
Well, I think this does the way it's written now, you could do both.
I don't think you can. That's not my reading of it.
It says except as, except for senior housing.
It doesn't say except for senior housing, it says except as permitted in that section. What that says to me is that that section allows you to exceed 50%. It doesn't say you can do, you can exceed 50% there and have 50, up to 50% in the other ones. So if you wanna do that, then we'll rewrite it so you can't do that.
Oh, so I'm a failure in that.
I'd see it that way too.
You do?
Language.
Yeah. I think all that now you're just saying that the 50% cap does not apply in the case of senior housing.
But you still have the 50% cap.
But the 50% cap does apply in all the other types of housing, so you can't combine them because then you wouldn't be eligible to.
You could if you do a cluster.
Well, I would wanna make that iron proof, that's what we can do. So I think we need to change it and not just say except as permitted. I think we'd have to say that however, in the case of.
I think the fact that.
Of an age restricted one.
We're getting two interpretations, it needs to be clear.
So I think, why don't we say that instead of saying except as permitted, we'll say in the case of an age restricted one, you can combine any of the others, not to exceed the age restricted units plus up to 50% density bonus. Okay, so I'll step one of the sections. I'll work it on, I'll run the language by you, but I don't think it's.
Don't make it too complicated, trust me. Because I think it's simple math, trust me.
Yeah, I know, but I don't think we're allowed to do it.
No, questionable.
And you don't wanna run into a case where neighbors are fighting and saying you don't have the rights to it.
Yeah, I mean, the bonus for age restricted is so much larger. I mean, everybody's.
The little bonus for senior houses.
Everybody's gonna be looking at that.
Yeah.
So you probably should say, instead of just saying section 8.3.9.1, you probably should say, not as he's senior, I don't know, age restricted.
Age restricted.
Yeah, so when I, whenever, I'll rewrite it, make sure that that jumps out.
So I will send everyone by email the proposed change. We added a section on page 12 for fiscal impact.
What is that gonna be about, schools?
It could be schools, but not necessarily, an age restricted one is, it's the cost of services to provide rescue, which is significant, very significant. The vast majority of calls in town are to our age restricted facilities. Going to page 14, this is where we added the affordability requirements. I know there's a lot of discussion about how to calculate the numbers there.
I thought a few words there, every, in the development between eight and nine, new residential units.
Would it have been easier just to put a table?
Sure, yeah.
This just looks.
Do you wanna do that?
I don't know, I mean, if you were.
Yeah, this is very cumbersome.
I would.
So why don't I do a table like the yield table? I'll send that by and know.
With ranges, so the number, the size of the table is as small as it can be.
All right.
Eight to nine, 10 to whatever.
Page 16 is the next one, off-street parking. Off-street parking in OSRD should comply with requirements of section 60 of this dialogue, except in the case of an age restricted OSRD or age restricted OSRD cost of a parking requirement shall be provided in section 8.3.13.10.14.
Is that being a big deal or anything? So, it's now midnight, isn't it?
The gloves are off with the.
All right, and then there are your design standards for age restricted housing, they're all new. They're taking the main part out of the SRD. I think they've pared down a bit, but they're.
There are no substantive changes from what you had in the.
It's the same thing, accessibility, limited bedrooms, availability parking, and community facilities. Those are the main things that have been a discussion on applications we've had. Then the next section, 8.3.1.4, is about the pre-application review by the menus committee. We discussed that in great detail at the last turn. That's instead of the pre-application conference.
We need to spell out who's on the pre-application review committee, that adds a lot of work there.
Oh, that makes it clear.
No one knows what the menus committee is.
Makes it clear to the applicant.
Well, you need to advertise the menus committee as doing it, but.
I don't have a problem with that.
Project narrative, preliminary plan, if you were all submission requirements, all this came out of the SRD. That's just moving the language. I don't think there's anything here, but of course, we'll rewrite it. Page 19. It's a reference to a future section, I guess, oh, to the special permit review requirements. We added one more on page 20, one more review requirement, responsiveness to all applicable elements of design standards in section 8.3.1.1.3, which was the section we added for age restricted housing. Then on page 21, OSRD special permit decision for density bonus units. Again, we took the criteria out of the SRD.
Wait, you wanted to talk about page 21?
21, establishment measures sufficient to provide for effective protection and maintenance of the common open space. So those were just additional criteria we thought were, you need to consider in your decision. So in the density bonus decision standards, I guess, is what these are. You have to make sure it conforms with the yield requirements in the previous section. Section that demonstrates no significant fiscal impact to the town, is consistent with the purposes of this section, the dialogue, demonstrate proper and complete application of the four-step design process, empower the scale, visual, character, and amenities of the surrounding neighborhood, general consistency with section 10.3, which guides special permits, responsiveness to all applicable elements of the design standards for, I think those were the design standards for age restricted. No, those are just the general design standards. Establishment measures sufficient to provide for effective protection and maintenance of the common open space, which looks like a repeat of all language right above. It is. So I'm not sure we need that in two places, what's the better place for?
Wait, which one do you need?
Two eight, two seven, and two eight.
OSRD special permit decision for single-family attached housing. What is this, OSRD, oh no, I guess it's, yeah, it's necessary, because these are two different special permits. One is the special permit, if you're not getting any bonus units, but you just wanna attach to structures instead of the standalone single families, you have criteria, and then these much more intensive criteria are if you want bonus units.
And numbering system is really good and carried away here.
Yeah, I agree. So maybe under the issue where the number stands at eight, these should be one, two, three, four. I don't know, I'm gonna leave that to Abby if she can find. Figure that out. Moving on, anything else on that article, should we do article two?
Are you saying you gotta live in the number, just make the one through?
I think so, just wanting to run the seeds, right? I think we can do that.
Do you have to do it before Abby comes up?
No, I'm guessing so. I don't have the time to do that. All right, there we go, that's it. So I need to go back and check other sections to be consistent at that level. Zoning amendments to allow outdoor seating is accessory use, so this is for commercial use. It's only allowed in commercial zones, it's not trying to regulate people's picnic tables in their backyards. So we add it to the use table and then we define what's required if you want.
So before they came to us like in Kiara, now do they just go to the building commissioner?
Yes.
And that's what we want?
So we're saying that it's no longer necessary to get a special permit for outdoor seating. Outdoor seating is now gonna be allowed by right as long as it meets these criteria. Are you comfortable with that? In Kiara, the issue was neighbors were concerned.
Lighting is an issue.
Lighting is an issue, so the building commissioner gets to review that, he gets to review the plans.
So I mean, shouldn't there, I mean, what if it is near a residential neighborhood and there might be noise and things like that?
I think Kiara is probably the best example of that.
I think it was too, yeah, I'm trying to think of somewhere else. I guess they could do it somewhere at the stagecoach building, do something on Hartford Street.
Maybe at some point.
I don't think they would, but maybe something would happen back there. I don't think they would, but maybe something would happen back there.
Yeah, if they did a big-
So do you want to, the way to get around that, if you feel the board needs to see it, would be the local business districts are the ones that you'd be concerned with, but that's where it's most likely to go too, and that's where, that's where we want it. We're trying to encourage it, which is why we didn't want to make it a special permit.
And this would be an amount of seating up to whatever number they wanted to do?
Yeah, I mean, it really doesn't-
As long as they have, they need the space, because you have to have the clearance from the sidewalk, safe and efficient public access. Outdoor seating areas should be appropriately separated from streets and sidewalks. So it's not really unlimited, it has to, has to be appropriate.
And what about the parking related to that?
Yeah, that would become part of the seating.
Right, so they have to look at that, and seating is seating. And so what they did in Kiara was, when they used the outdoor seats, they had to rope off the indoor seats, because they didn't add parking. So that's the same thing that would have to be done here. So the building commissioner would, would require, they couldn't add seats if they didn't have enough parking for it.
Or the same thing they could eliminate.
Or they could eliminate, right, temporarily eliminate them, use one instead of the other.
Is that the assumption we're making in this Lincoln Center?
That is. Now, that's, the only place that's not like that is at University Station, because we approve parking as a whole, you know, for the whole development. So like, not your average Joe's has two hundred indoor seats, they're gonna have eighty additional outdoor seats. But we're not requiring them to rope off eighty indoor seats. We're presuming that they'll self-regulate with their parking.
I don't know, they all seem like an awful lot of houses in that parking lot, sadly, I couldn't believe how many houses.
There were a lot of them tonight. I was at this, until six.
Saturday night was the free, was the free.
Anyway, of course, that's why we go, yeah.
No, it was, it was tonight, a Tuesday.
Yeah, and it was-
So, so, a lot, Tuesday nights during March, they are donating fifteen percent of sales to Foundation for Westwood Education. Courage you always have.
On Tuesday night?
Tuesday nights in March.
We should have stopped coming in before we have this on.
Well, it's on March.
It's on March yet, I don't know, they might come to it, they don't come to it.
It feels like you've been here a while.
Yeah, you've locked even.
It's not yet, yeah.
Yeah, so do you want me to add anything specific about noise and lighting as criteria that the building commissioner should look at? Is there anything else?
We should say something, but I don't know how to-
Lighting and noise with the two-
I'll work on that too, and I'll send by email.
That don't relate to construction necessarily.
Any, any, any noise and any lighting or-
I think they would have adverse effects on the-
Should not have adverse effects on the neighborhood.
Because it was a special permit, how did the neighbors find out about Kiara?
They were, because it was a special permit, they were notified.
So they won't identify as a-
No notification if it's by right.
Here for lighting issues or-
It's by right, it just happens. So then the other thought I have, so if you do want to add criteria, that, that have to make a judgment call, that's probably more appropriate for Abby to make that call than the building commissioner. Because his purview is construction as opposed to neighborhood effects.
Would you say if there's a residence within so many feet of the applicant? Then it goes to administration?
No, I would say within the applicant. So in the case of Kiara, what was important was that the outdoor seating went in the front, not the back, and so it didn't have a negative effect on the residences behind. We heard from people across the street. But it was across a street, you know, so the noise and the light of the street were already occurring, and we proved that the balance of noise and light were no worse on that side of the street before or after.
Remember, weren't they gonna do it on the side originally?
They were, yeah. And we didn't like that, because that was a problem for the close neighbors that weren't separated by high street. So I think that worked really well. And this board reviewed it. I think Abby could do that, I think that, I think Joe Doyle could do it, but I don't know that the next building inspector will have the same skill set. So maybe we'd be better off putting this in hands of the-
Yeah, how about, how about for a restaurant with the sale of alcohol, would that make sense?
So the, for the sale of alcohol, if they already have an alcohol license and they add outdoor seats, they need to modify their alcohol license, the selectmen have to review it. If it was a new application that was going for an alcohol license, the selectmen have to review it. So in addition to any review, even if you have a full site plan review of a restaurant, if they're serving alcohol, the, the selectmen review that over and above your application before they issue. For anything, yeah, for any changes.
They should change the, the-
For putting your television, for changing the, you know, putting the bar on this side instead of that side. They review everything. They get a floor plan for every-
Okay, good.
Alright, so change building commissioner to town.
Oh, Abby will be sad if she misses this one.
What else can we tell about? Be careful about vacation.
Okay, um, article three, amendments related to affordable units, so I will do the same thing, put the chart in place of all the text in eight point three, point nine, point five. Affordable requirement, I guess the same thing there. And the same thing on the next one, nine point five, point fourteen. The language in nine point seven, point four, point five, point three, and he's okay. Round it up to the next whole number, and remain affordable in perpetuity.
Now, this doesn't affect University Station, which are the campus?
It does, so that's- It affects the next-
Next phase?
Phase by saying you have to round up. So we already said in our bylaw that the next phase of housing will be viewed as requiring ten percent for the housing. Remember, University Station was a little bit different, we wanted to upload the front part of the project to fifteen percent. We actually got more than fifteen percent of the front and, and ten percent the end, and balances out, so. There's no application before us now, so I think it's okay to make this change, it's just a rounding factor. It'll be the difference of a single unit, if it's, if it's any difference at all. So I don't think that's an issue over three hundred units. They might offset it, but I don't, don't think it's a problem. Administrative review and approval of minor applications, so this article four, this was for wireless communication. We're already doing this under the language in section seven point three, but this just makes it perfectly clear that we have the authority to do that. I think we have to do it to comply with the, you know, class act, amend the FCC regulations. Article five, joint off-street parking, this one might require more discussion, because I see Abby still had a question here.
I thought we had decided this.
Well, it looks like she wasn't sure what we decided. Did you decide you wanted to keep the special permit in cases where it's not joint parking, but simply a reduction of parking for an individual owner? So that's an instance like the, like the storage facility that we might hear an application on, on University Avenue, where they don't want to provide the amount of parking, they have a new building, if used for a use other than the storage facility would require, they'd want to ask for a special permit. And right now, you would have to grant a special permit only if they could show that they have the ability to put that additional parking on the site at a time when it is needed. So if you want to keep that the way it is, keep the status quo, then we should just eliminate any changes to section six point one, point nine. If you want to make that in the form of a waiver instead of a special permit, you can do that too. I don't, I don't know that it's necessary for standalone applications like that. I do think a waiver is a better idea than a special permit for joint and shared parking.
So you said there was some reasoning here, that you wanted to avoid something where they come in just for the idea, how suddenly need a special permit?
Right, and the times when we don't know that in advance, so we wouldn't be able to advertise it, or the times when it's a, a joint parking situation like at the Stagecoach Plaza, where there are so many different uses in there, and maybe they apply for a site plan review to upgrade the outside of the building, and in the meantime, the tenants change. And you might go from a retail use to a restaurant use, which affects your parking count. And that wasn't known at the time they advertised for the exterior changes to the lot. But it's known before they open up, while it's still in hearing, and then we have to go back out and re-advertise. So I don't think for a standalone application, it's an issue, because I think you know from the very beginning, standalone application has a clear parking count. It doesn't come up later, but when it's something that has a lot of uses and the, the uses are changing, if, if the proposal at one oh one to one to twenty-three, or three oh one, three oh one to three twenty-three Washington Street, if that wasn't an FMUOD special permit and therefore didn't have a parking requirement, if that was being reviewed under a site plan review, that would be a perfect instance, where we're reviewing a building design for some future tenants that have yet to be identified, where we can't clearly know what the parking need is. And if it was not under a special permit, that would be a problem. If, if it was a site plan review, and we'd advertise it as a site plan review, they're building a new building, a general commercial building, but they don't have the tenants lined up yet. We think they have enough parking, we're ready to go ahead sometime before we grant your decision, and we find out that they needed a special permit request because they wanted to have a restaurant and retail business with off-hours, then we'd have to go back out and re-advertise it. So that's why we're recommending that you allow a waiver, not a special permit, in joint, shared parking.
In joints, okay, so-
So that's section six point one, point twelve, not six point one, point nine. Six point one, point nine isn't standalone ones. And I think, I think you can leave it as is, I don't think we need to change it. That's up to you.
So the real problem that we had was, was the joint parking didn't stay one way or the other. So now we're saying it's, and it's a waiver, so we don't have to put a bunch of conditions or anything. A bunch of findings or anything like that.
Right. Well, you can, though, we do say we can grant the waiver with or without conditions.
Oh, no, without a condition, but, but we don't need, like we have here in six point one, three.
You don't need a separate advertisement. It's not a special permit, it's three votes, not four, that are required to-
But you need reasons why you should grant the waiver.
You still need to, right, you still need to justify why you've granted it, but it's not a special permit standard, and it doesn't require a supermajority vote. It just lowers the bar a little bit, but in joint parking, if you're allowing joint parking, you want to be more consistent. Alright, moving on, changes to section six point one, point twelve, which just we discussed, to allow a waiver instead of a special permit, and also there's some clarifying remarks.
So why do we keep changing joint to joint slash share, is that?
It's too late for me to remember exactly why, but there is a reason why. There's a difference between joint parking and shared parking, but we're treating them the same way for the purpose of the waiver. I think joint parking, joint parking, I think is on the same lot, and shared parking maybe between lots. I think that's it, but it's really too late. Alright, moving on to article six. For a concierge movement special permit. The planning board inherited this lovely section of the bylaw, the one we gave it to, we forgot to change the chart. So this breaks that by changing the chart.
We shouldn't do it anymore for quite some time, till this is remedied.
Alright.
There's something seriously wrong with that bylaw.
Which is, I-
Did the ZBAN give the same problems?
Yes, they did, and that's why they gave it to you.
Why didn't they fix it? Why didn't they tell us?
Oh, we thought we were taking it from, we didn't know they were giving it to us.
What can, what can we give them? What joint could we give them?
It's not the bylaw that's flawed, it's the review process.
Yes, something's flawed.
So-
Well, there, a lot of things flawed, and I think what pointed out, what we've seen is, this town has no prior requirement for cutting down trees on your property or, or, you know, digging out holes or anything, like always moving dirt around. Well, we actually, we do say it, but we don't have tree cutting first of all.
There's just a verbal question right now when you apply for building permits. There's not an affidavit, an engineer's calculation, and there needs to be.
I actually thought it was an anomaly, up until tonight.
It's, it's the way building permits are required. You just show grading, you don't have to, you don't have to calculate it. You just, the applicant is asked to give an estimate, that's not an engineer's calculation.
I think we need to come in at one hundred and fifty-five yards every time.
Well, and Mill Street went, started before the museum, building permit application.
Well, technically, you don't need a building permit to move dirt, but in most cases, you wouldn't bother to do it without a building permit. So in most cases, we would catch it if we had an affidavit that required an engineer's calculation of this. So I think we can make that change, so it's not zoning, that's administration. But we still wouldn't catch Far Reach Road, or whatever that is, no.
Yeah, so I think we should look at towns like Welsley with their tree removal.
Looks like good, it was a good one.
Other ones, and, and one of these other towns also do about their movement.
Well, how do you tell people-
Most towns don't have earth removal requirements.
At all.
How do you tell people, if you want to cut that tree down, you better call someone in the town first? Yeah, why people know that?
That you can't, so if we had, if we had bylaw that said that, we would have to publicize it to everybody. We would have to frequently mention it in our monthly or quarterly newsletter, it's onerous.
But you gotta let them know, I mean, if, I mean, either the town says, hey, you can do whatever you want with their property, or we want to protect some of our-
We can draft a treaty by law, the chance of getting that group of town meeting is so small.
Yeah, no, it's like a keeper of earth material.
I don't think it's a useful, useful time for letting this happen.
Yeah, I don't understand, do we?
Okay, now, I'm like-
Think about something, yeah.
So it's, don't even, that's FMUOD. We've been through this one before, it's a settlement agreement. If it's signed, we reduce the tenant, because if it's not, we delete it, that's it. There are map amendments, just to correct housekeeping errors on the map.
Well, I think this is a hearing open, right?
Yeah, so we want to continue the hearing to seven, when we meet with the income, in case you want to make changes on the spot at that.
I think a motion, we continue this hearing on March seventh, at seven thirty.
I'm not sure, though, we're going to get the little theater, I can find it on the website.
I would suggest you guys, Chris, that we do something, not kind of matter to me much, but, to, to look at our agenda.
I agree, I said that to Nora earlier.
Yes, so let me, what, there are two problems with the agenda. Part of it is that applications get continued, like there are concierge movement special permit for Mill Street last time, and then the one again for seventy-nine Country Lane. It should not come to the board till it's ready for a decision, till everything is in order. Now, I know there's a timeframe in the application submission time. I think Abby was trying to rush that one because the water problems were so bad. That's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is you're only met once this month. Right, well, you met twice this month, but you're not meeting again until March fifteenth, and then you're not meeting again after that until April ninth, April twelfth. So March fifteenth and April twelfth, you can't go that far without meetings. Because there were items that could have been pushed off to the March meeting, but the March meeting was gonna have the same problem, because they, you didn't have a meeting again until April. You need to meet every two weeks.
Why didn't we meet two weeks in March?
I know people are busy, but you met two times in, in February.
I know, February, March, why aren't we?
I don't know. I think you couldn't come up with a date, and people are busy.
Somebody, somebody has a spin count.
Yeah, that's probably it, but when that happens-
Then you gotta meet three weeks.
Right, so someone, we're also busier than we've ever been before, so when someone, when we get an application, we have to take it up in the mandatory timeframe. We can't say, we can't say no.
Well, where's the meeting?
Oh, I remember, we are con-
Sorry.
Sorry, I know, I want to move in, sorry.
It's the second? And the twenty-second?
Like, give me on the twenty-second, I don't remember that.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, thank you.
My fault.
Okay, so, we're waiting to continue.
I'm good for the twenty-ninth, but I think someone else is not good for the twenty-eighth, that was the problem.
You have, yes. Here, community meeting on the Westwood by law.
That's alright, we're, we're second?
We're the second decade?
All's in favor?
Aye.
And we need to open and close?
Yes.
The IDI special permit, seventy-five, eighty-five.
Right, if that was kept open, although you decided, you issued your decision, it was kept open to allow the ConCon to issue this decision in case they changed it, and did not, they proved the same thing, you did, so you can close the hearing without action.
Make a motion to close again.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We're not doing any other business, right?
No.
Alright. Good. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Favor.
Aye.